Welcome to the May 19, 2020 meeting of the Mecklenburg County Lord of Commissioners. The Board continues to conduct business remotely due to our COVID-19 state of the emergency and stay-at-home orders. The public may join and follow the meeting by viewing it online at mecknc.gov, mecknc.gov, or you may follow on YouTube, follow us on Twitter, or call the following number: 408-418-9388. Again, 408-418-9388, and enter the following access code: We will begin the meeting tonight by having each Board member identify him or herself so that the records will reflect who is present and participating in the meeting. I will introduce myself and then call upon each of my colleagues to do the same. I am George Dunlap. I am participating remotely. I'm elected by the people of District 3, and I also have the privilege of serving as Chair of the Board. At this time, Commissioner O'Condon.
Good evening. This is Pat Condon, County Commissioner-at-Large.
Commissioner L.L. Scarborough.
Good evening, L.L. Scarborough, County Commissioner-at-Large.
Commissioner Fuller.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Fuller. I'm honored and privileged to serve as the County Commissioner-at-Large, representing all the more than 1 million people who lived in Mecklenburg County. And I'm so glad to be with you tonight and that you're with us. I have somehow mastered the technology so that you can now see me by video in addition to hearing my voice, and I'm participating in this meeting remotely. Welcome.
Commissioner District 1.
Good evening. This is Commissioner Elaine Powell. I represent District 1, which is all of North Mecklenburg County, including Davidson, Huntersville, and Cornelius, and North Charlotte. I also serve as Vice Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner District 2.
This is Vilma D. Leek, representing the most powerful district in the county and happy to be with you today remotely.
Commissioner District 4.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. I am participating remotely, and I represent the people of District 4.
And District 5.
Good evening. My name is Susan Harden, and I am... Oh, let me... Oh, I'm unhumored. Okay, that's good. I represent the people of District 5. Thank you.
And Commissioner District 6.
Good evening. This is Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell. I am coming to you from the amazing District 6, and I would just like to take a moment to give a shout-out to our District 1 awesome representative Elaine Powell, who had a birthday yesterday. So happy birthday to our colleague. Thank you for being born.
All right. Happy birthday. For the record, all Commissioners have acknowledged their presence for the meeting. Therefore, we do have a quorum. I will also at this time ask the following people to introduce themselves: Clerk to the Board.
Good evening, Emily Kunzie, Clerk to the Board.
Our Deputy Clerk.
Good evening. This is Christine Smith, Deputy Clerk.
Our County Manager.
Good evening. I'm Deana DiOrio, Mecklenburg County Manager.
And our County Attorney.
Good evening, Tyrone Wade, County Attorney.
Okay, before we do our housekeeping rules, let us have our invocation first by Commissioner Leek, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let me first say thank you for the opportunity to bring the invocation on this evening. As I reflect upon what to share with this community on this afternoon, I thought about many things that we can be blessed and say thank you for, and I pray that we will continue to move forward. And the most important thing to me today, and I prayed about it long and hard, is the 23rd Psalm that I live by. "For the Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. I shall not want rest; he maketh me to lie down in green pastures. I shall not want drink; he leadeth me beside the still waters. I shall not want forgiveness; he restores my soul. I shall not want guidance; he leadeth me in the path of righteousness, for his name's sake. I shall not want companionship. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will feel no evil, for thou art with me. I shall not want comfort; thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. I shall not want food; thou preparest a table before me in the presence of mine enemies. I shall not want joy; thou knowest my head with oil. I shall not want anything at this time, for you see my cup runneth over. My cup runneth over, for surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord forever and ever, and evermore. Amen, and God bless."
Okay, our Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since we are still conducting remote meetings, there are a few housekeeping rules to which we must adhere to to govern our actions so that the Board minutes will accurately be reflected. If a Commissioner wishes to leave the meeting, please ask for upon a personal privilege. State the privilege so that the minutes will capture the actions and the attendance of each Board member. When a Commissioner returns, please announce your return when convenient to do so. Since no one is physically present, when a matter is put on the floor for debate, I will have to call on each Commissioner and ask whether they have comments. Please wait to be recognized by the Chair before speaking, and please refrain from speaking over one another while interrupting another speaker. May I also suggest that each speaker ends his or her comment by saying, "This concludes my comments." If a Commissioner does not have any comments, please state, "I have no comment," or "I do not wish to speak on this matter." When a motion is made, motions need to state, to be stated, and who seconded, and the Chair will verbally repeat the motion and seconder and the motion and the seconder of the motion for the records. Since we cannot see one another, well, I guess we can tonight. When there is a matter requiring a vote, I will still conduct a roll-call vote. I will call upon each Commissioner separately and ask how he or she cast their vote verbally so that there is no confusion as to how Commissioners voted. At the end of each roll-call vote, the Clerk will state the results of the votes. All right? Thank you. So let us begin by again confirming those items that have been pulled from the agenda. You should see them there. Are there any other consent items to be pulled? If not, we will move to the first item on our agenda, which is awards and recognition. Item number 6168 is a proclamation for our Emergency Medical Services Week, and that proclamation will be read by Commissioner Elaine Powell.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for asking me to read the proclamation. I just want to say when I was growing up, and you and I wish I was still the same, when medic passed us an ambulance or any kind of emergency vehicle, we always pulled over to the side of the road and waited. We didn't just pull over for a second. We pulled over and waited. And my family members would say, "Let's say a prayer for the person in the ambulance." And so I always have. And now when medic passes me, I say a prayer for the person that's being transported, and I say a prayer for the people taking care of that patient. And I hope people will take it more seriously when medic is passing, when medic needs to get through, and they'll pull over. I'm going to read the Mecklenburg County, North Carolina proclamation. "Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the men and women of emergency medical services are ready to provide compassionate, lifesaving care, and where needed, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas when the health of Mecklenburg County is threatened, emergency medical services remain at the front line in selfless service to our community. And whereas the emergency medical system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas Mecklenburg County desires to continue to provide patient outcomes that are among the best in the nation, and assures all citizens receive the highest standards of emergency medical care. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners, in recognition of this event, does hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2020, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme "Medic Strong", and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, activities, and expressions of gratitude. This 19th day of May, 2020, George Dunlap, Chairman, Mecklenburg Board of County Commissioners. And in addition, thank you to all the mechanics that provide support maintenance to all of the vehicles. And they're asking that if we do any gratitude, that we do a hashtag of #MedicStrong. And thank you to Joe Penner and to everyone on his team. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Moved by Commissioner...
This is Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Okay, it's seconded. Roll-call vote at this time, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Harding.
Yes.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote to adopt the proclamation.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to public appearance. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers tonight?
Yes, sir. We have one speaker.
Okay. If you will indulge me, I must read this because we do have speakers. Public appearance is a period during the Board's regular meeting that members of the public have the opportunity to speak on matters not appearing on the agenda. Members of the public who appear in the public appearance portion of the regular meeting may discuss any matter within jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners except for the public-type matters, a matter which concerns the candidacy of another person for public office, including the candidacy of a person appearing before the meeting, or a request that the Board consider funding a certain program or activity either from the current budget or by future budget. Such requests will be made at the Board's annual budget public hearing. The time limit for speaking is three minutes. You will be recognized. You'll have three minutes to speak, and a timer will sound at the end of your three minutes. You would be thanked and placed on mute. I remind you, if you go past three minutes, you will be muted. The Clerk will now call on our speakers.
Our speaker tonight is Ariel Thompson. Ms. Thompson, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Ariel Thompson. I am the founder of The Beauty of Motherhood. I focus on breastfeeding in the African-American community. I've noticed that through this pandemic, there's been a lot of women who are not getting the assistance they need in the hospital setting. So I have started a BreastfeedMe app to provide that information for them so that way they will be able to still get the help that they need. There are a lot of women who are having babies, and lactation consultants are not available. But I've been doing this nonprofit for about four years now. I have 89,000 members in my Facebook group, and it's very important that I continue to provide that information to the women in North Carolina or in Charlotte. So I just wanted to provide that information and let you, let everyone know that there is an app that I have been creating, and I would love for the app to help the women in the community through this pandemic.
Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any other speakers?
No, that concludes all the speakers for this evening.
All right. This concludes our public comment period for the meeting. At this time, we'll move to appointments. The Board will consider one appointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council to fill an unexpired term expiring June 30, 2021, in the general public category. There are two nominees, Ms. Phyllis Barnett and Ms. Jana Ellison. Both were nominated at our last meeting. So what I will do is I will do a roll-call vote first for Phyllis Barnett to see how many votes she get, and then we will do a roll-call vote for Jana Ellison. All right, so at this time, the vote is for Phyllis Barnett. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Leek. Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner... I got you, yes. Commissioner Jarrell.
Yes.
Commissioner Harding.
Excuse me, no.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
No.
Commissioner Condon.
No.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Yes.
The Chair votes yes. All right? And we'll still conduct the vote for Jana Ellison, even though there are five votes. I don't know, Mr. Attorney, do I still need to do this?
No, sir. Once you have a majority, that person is appointed by the Board by majority vote.
All right. So we'll now move to our public hearing portion of the meeting.
It's not yet 6:30. Mr. Chairman, you have to, you cannot start the public hearing until 6:30, so you need to go to the next agenda item.
Okay. Let me move on. Let me see where we are. Okay, so that takes us to our manager's report. I know there are a couple of things on the manager's report. Deana, if you could just do the first item, which is the COVID response update, and then we'll do questions, and then we'll come back to the public hearing because it's free to be held.
Okay, that's fine. So under the COVID-19 response update, Gibby Harris will provide an update on some of the data, and I will turn the presentation over to Sarah Cunningham, who will be talking to you about the CARES Act funding and proposals for the Board to consider and how those dollars get spent. That's in response to what you requested at the last meeting. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Gibby.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Manager, I'll give you a brief update on where we are in our community tonight. To date, we've had 2,735 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Mecklenburg County. Excuse me?
Someone was not muted.
We've had 69 deaths, and we have 15 long-term care facilities in outbreak status. We did receive a truck from the state this week with protective equipment for all of our long-term care facilities, and emergency management is in the process of delivering those supplies. That's supposed to be a 14-day supply for them. We've seen an increase in testing over the last several weeks. The state did request that each county come up with a plan to test 5% of their population in 30 days. I will tell you that with the hospitals stepping up, we have tested 25% of that 5% in just nine days. With that increased testing, we've also seen higher case counts almost every day. Today was our highest case count at 89 new cases. Because of the new cases that we're seeing coming in, we are increasing our capacity for contact tracing. At this point, we have additional school nurses that are helping in that area. But in addition, our internal audit staff are going to start working with us for a month or so, as well as some folks from Medic that will be helping with contact tracing as well. One of our specific concerns is that recently we've seen a fairly large uptick in the number of Hispanic cases. I mentioned that last... I mentioned that last week. We've now a third of all of our reported cases are among Hispanics. With the targeted testing, essential jobs that they do that restrict their ability to social distance, we've also seen some household spread in large families. And their pre-existing disparities, especially in the area of poverty, all contribute to this. We are trying to address the situation with expanded outreach and education. We developed a Spanish toolkit, which is on our website. We have pulled additional staff who work specifically with the Latino community to do targeted outreach. They're working with Hispanic-owned and serving businesses, as well as some other partners, including churches and the Latino Chamber of Commerce. We're also doing a good bit of work with media outlets, radio spots, we'll start later this week. And we've been doing quite a few interviews with their media. I do want to address one specific issue. Today, I used the term outbreak when it comes to our construction sites. In public health, we often use that term to refer to the spread of an illness within a group, place, or geography. My use of the term was in this general context. In the context of COVID-19, we've received specific guidance from CDC and North Carolina DHHS about defining and reporting COVID-19 outbreaks in long-term care facilities and other congregant living settings. No such definition has been established for other settings like businesses and construction sites. We are aware of some clusters of cases of COVID-19 likely linked to work site exposures among construction workers. And we are doing some significant work with construction sites to improve their ability to provide the appropriate PPE and to enforce social distancing in this population. We will release further details if there is a public health reason to do so. The other thing I wanted to mention are the trends that we're seeing. Our percent positives, although the number of cases has risen significantly, our percent positives have seen a slight decrease, which is the right direction we want to go in. Our hospitalizations have been stable. However, we are seeing a slight decrease in our social distancing, which is to be expected with some of the release of restrictions that we've seen in our community. That social distancing is still well above what it was when we first implemented our stay-at-home order. The other thing that I wanted to try to show you briefly is a new dashboard. We're going to try this and see if it works. We have worked with our partners at emergency management to create a dashboard. This dashboard will be updated daily at 5:00 PM. We will continue to do the twice-weekly data reports. Those reports allow us to frame the issues as they arise from data and put them in community context. So we will continue to do those reports as well. This dashboard will go live after it's being presented to you tonight. There will be a link from the county's COVID webpage for people to access this website. I mean, this dashboard. So what you will see on the dashboard on this first, you see at the top, we've got four different categories. Community impact overview, social distancing status, medical facilities locator, and local businesses. At some point, we will probably be adding testing sites as well. Within this first page, you see our cumulative lab-confirmed COVID-19 cases. And what I will show you, I hope, is that if you click up on the right-hand corner of that, it opens that page up for you. And you'll see the total number, but then you can go to the trend line at the bottom and open that up. And it will show you what we're seeing in terms of trends for this particular set of data. And then you close that back out. You can do the same in each of these other sites within the system. So this gives you an idea of our death trends, our hospital census of patients. You can see our trends, and as I mentioned, that's fairly stable. We've had a slight uptick in the last day or two. And the others, the last one I'll show you is the lab-confirmed COVID-19 cases in the bottom left-hand corner. And what this shows you is that the blue lines are the number of cases that we've had. The pink dotted line that goes up shows you, those are the cumulative cases, I'm sorry. The blue lines are those cases who have been released from isolation. So that gives you an idea of how many individuals have been ill and have been released from isolation. The social distancing status at the top just will keep you sort of informed as to where we are with social distancing. As I mentioned, we are seeing a slight downtick in the amount of social distancing. But again, it's well above where we were at the beginning. The map on the right shows you, the lighter colors is the percent of devices staying at home. So the lighter colors are less than 20, that shows more activity. The greater than 60 shows you the percent of people on the road. So it just gives you a picture of what is happening. Under the local business tab, we have worked with local businesses. They have provided us with information about their open status or closed status. And they are asked to update this information regularly with us, so hopefully this will be useful to the community. And as I mentioned, this dashboard will go live after your meeting tonight, and hopefully will be useful to our community. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Gibby. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I will turn the podium over to Sarah Cunningham, who will walk you through where we are with our CARES funding and proposals for the Board to consider.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, County Manager, Diorio, and good evening, Chair Dunlap and Commissioners. Tonight, we'll be walking through the county's COVID-19 revenues and response plan from a financial perspective in response to your request in our May 5th meeting. I would like to thank the county manager, the executive team, Starla Tanner, our finance team, and all the departments for their contributions to pulling together the work. First, we'll provide some context around COVID-19. We will then outline our proposed strategy to maximize COVID-19 federal and state assistance. We will then turn to our proposed framework for allocating the $39.2 million that the county received in the CARES Act as coronavirus relief funds. We'll then walk through our county recommended funding proposals and close with next steps. Next slide, please. As context, we are navigating an unprecedented emergency event. This is a public health crisis affecting the entire world. The effects of COVID-19 on state and local revenues are immediate and deep. Where states on average saw a 12% decline over the Great Recession, analysis suggested an average 20% decline in just over a few months during the COVID pandemic. There is help with federal and state stimulus and assistance help. With federal and state stimulus and assistance, however, each of the revenue streams has its own requirements, and some are still being decided. FEMA assistance is a big component as well, but we expect it to be a long window to reimbursement. FEMA is our funder of last resort, and COVID-19 is impacting all 50 states and seven territories, a first in the history of FEMA. This requires for the county a strategy to leverage our resources and maximize our recovery. Next slide, please. To provide some insight into possible COVID-19 revenues, it is a complex web. Some of the revenues will reimburse us for the cost incurred, others are for new programs or services. Some opportunities require application, others are provided through formula. For many of the streams, the federal and or state decisions on how to allocate and eligibility requirements are pending. There are three basic kinds of revenues that we're looking at. One are known revenues, where we know the source, the requirements, and the dollars. First of these is a coronavirus relief fund, is direct federal assistance, flexible in nature but time limited, for $39.2 million. We also have received Centers for Disease Control Funding, that's federal funding via the state, which is limited to public health, about $560,000. Another example is Ryan White, where we're expecting federal formula grass specific to supporting HIV of about $315,000 via the CARES Act. The next bucket are our likely revenues, where we know the source, the requirements, but the dollars are uncertain. This includes FEMA disaster funding, which is federal via the state, which reimburs us for the cost of response and mitigation, and the county has a match of 25%. Also, things like temporary assistance to community families, that's received from the federal government via state allocation, for economic impacts. The third bucket are our possible revenues. These include grant opportunities that require application. One example is Economic Development Administration CARES Act funding. This is a federal program that's not typically available to local governments, but we may qualify. Next slide, please. Taking a look at the cost side of COVID-19, we're defining COVID-19 costs as those that are in response to COVID-19, and they take a variety of forms. These are public health costs, assistance to those who are negatively impacted by COVID-19. It includes technology costs, PPE, enhanced cleaning, and other operational costs, including our expected cost to transition back to the office with new normal. We have a process set up to be able to review each cost. We have set up our financial and human resource systems so we can track staff time and expenses with a COVID tag. We want to make sure that we're capturing all of our COVID costs and that we're documenting them in line with the federal and state requirements where we might get reimbursement. Context is critical here to be able to maximize potential for recovery and mitigate audit risk because of all of the different requirements that each funding stream has. When we're reviewing these expenses, we want to ask, what funding stream is most likely for maximum recovery an opportunity? We also are performing analysis of these costs over time. We are in a changing environment for performing trend analysis. We're considering all of these in context of our current county operations, the impact of lost revenue, and what the cost of new normal might look like. Next slide, please. So taking a look at our COVID-19 cost to date, as of May 15, the county has booked $13.2 million in COVID-19 costs, including expenditures and encumbrances. This includes $11.4 million in non-personnel expenses, $1.8 million in staff costs, including special pay authorities, county emergency lead, and federal emergency lead. We expect that as we're going through the deep dive and working with each department to review these costs and staff time, we may find additional COVID-19-related costs as we work with these departments. We also expect the cost to grow in the future as we continue our COVID-19 mitigation activities. Some of these costs are eligible through reimbursement, through coronavirus relief fund, or other federal or state programs, and some are not. Our proposed strategy seeks to maximize our outcomes for the county. Next slide, please. We're proposing to achieve this by, first, looking at the most restricted funding streams first. That means where we have specific grants and revenue streams with limited purposes, making sure that we've allocated costs so we can use those to their maximum potential. Second, looking at the CARES coronavirus relief fund. These are very flexible funds that can be used for both public health and to mitigate the economic impact of COVID-19. Third, we want to look at county funds, and they have potential for FEMA or other reimbursement. And in all of this, we want to make sure that we're considering the needs of all Mecklenburg County residents, the Board of County Commissioners' core areas of interest, and the impact, timing, and other potential assistance available to achieve the same goals. Next slide, please. Specifically, looking to our proposed framework for the coronavirus relief fund. Consistent with our overall funding strategy, we want to ensure, first, each investment must meet CARES Act criteria. Second, the investment should directly address public health needs for the negative economic impacts resulting from COVID-19. Third, the investment plan as a whole should seek to fully utilize the funding and address the county and board priorities, including public health, disparate impacts of COVID-19 on working families, and people of color, and other needs. Four, due to uncertainty, we want to make sure that we're thinking about in retaining some amount of funds for future unknowns. Next slide, please. To review the coronavirus relief fund requirements, first and foremost, these are payments that may be only used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19. That these costs were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved as of March 27, 2020, the date that the CARES Act was enacted, and that the costs were incurred between March 1, 2020, and December 30, 2020. Funds may not be used to replace revenues lost due to COVID-19. And any funds that are not expended, that means checks written and money out the door, would need to be returned to Treasury. Next slide, please. There are some additional legal requirements that we also must adhere to. While coronavirus relief funds are extremely flexible, investments still must be legal under federal and North Carolina law and local ordinances. For North Carolina, local governments must have specific statutory authority to undertake activities. Our school of government emphasizes this. Some federal guidance, for example, the economic support to businesses or individuals that would be allowable under the coronavirus relief fund, are not allowable under North Carolina law. Legal investments include things like food delivery for residents, for example, senior citizens or other vulnerable populations, maintaining county detention facilities, and support for homeless populations. North Carolina law does not allow gifts to private entities, grants to small businesses, or payments to individuals unless they meet a specific public purpose. Next slide, please. As part of this framework, we propose broad categories that factor in county needs and board priorities. These include employee and facility safety, things like the cost of PPE for county staff, and improvements to facilities to promote social distancing and safety as we return to the office. It includes housing and the homeless. Proposals involving direct support to the housing and homeless community, such as restrooms and wash stations. It includes public health, those investments directly tied to our mitigation of COVID-19 in our community. Economic development, which could include investments to support areas particularly stricken by COVID-19. And other investments, which would include things like food access, assistance to working families, or investments to address equity issues driven by COVID-19. Some investments may cross multiple categories. As you'll see, many of the county-proposed investments will fall into employee, facility, safety, and health. First, we want to be looking to identify the best-fit category. And then, once we identify the proposal category, we will evaluate each proposal for impact, the degree to which the investment is expected to have a significant positive policy impact and directly support the help or mitigating the negative economic consequences with COVID-19. And two, the ability to complete that work and expend funds by December 30, 2020. Third, we also want to consider whether other funding is available for the same purpose. Next slide, please. County staff recommend that we seek to recover non-personnel coronavirus relief fund costs eligible to date and our projected needs through December 30, 2020. This includes investments in employee and facility safety. We also are recommending included contingency of about 5%. We would like to invite the Board's input on the remaining funds. Now, as a testament to the fluid nature of the complex web of federal and state funding, we have an update to the amounts presented in the slide. This afternoon, we learned that the state is expected to help with the cost of social distancing, isolation, and quarantine hotels. The state is expected to provide the county's 25% match with respect to FEMA assistance. That means the county can fully cover the cost of hotels using the FEMA and state assistance together. The hotels, including security and food, were estimated to cost about $5.8 million through December 30, 2020. Because we can fully recover these costs through FEMA, we are revising the county staff proposed uses down to $12.4 million, including the $2 million contingency. This leaves $26.8 million in remaining coronavirus relief funds for investment. And we seek the Board of County Commissioners' input on the use of these remaining funds. Next slide, please. This slide provides an overview of the $13.2 million in costs the county's incurred through May 15 and those that are eligible for coronavirus relief funds. Those that are not eligible, the $5.5 million that was appropriated for the Small Business Emergency Stabilization Fund is likely not eligible because the loans that are paid back would not be considered spent. The second pot, the majority of the $1.8 million in COVID-19 personnel costs to date are not eligible because they are not for staff that are directly responding to COVID-19 or because the county is requesting and seeking repayment of these amounts through other grants and sources. or because the county is requesting and seeking repayment of these amounts through other grants and sources. There are about 5.9 million in costs incurred to date that are eligible after these two categories. We have spent about 1.6 million on hotels. So that means there are about 4.3 million in costs incurred to date that we recommend recovering using the coronavirus relief funds. Next slide, please. Here, we provide an overview of our proposals by category and projected future costs. Our estimates before accounting for hotels were about 12.3 million in future costs. The hotels were expected to cost about 4.2 million, including security and food. So after we account for those which are expected to be reimbursed through FEMA in the state, we forecast about 8.1 million in costs through December 30th, 2020 on these investments. With total estimated county proposals, including contingency at C at 12.4 million, including reimbursement and expected future costs, again, this leaves about 26.8 million for remaining investments for which we seek the board's approval. Next slide, please. Our next steps are to develop these options with the remaining 26.8 million to support economic development, equity, mental health, small business, working families, and other priorities or needs for our community. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Madam manager, is there anything else with this presentation? Okay. Madam manager? Do you know? Okay. Two things. First of all, let's deal with any questions that you might have related to the COVID update. And I'll just go down the line. Because after we've answered your questions, the county manager has made a proposal as to how these funds should be spent, and we'll discuss that secondly. So any questions related to the COVID response? Commissioner Kopp.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask Gibby a question about her remarks. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Hold up a minute. I'm sorry. I want to make sure that we establish the rules before we get started. Madam clerk, up to six minutes. Okay, I'm sorry. Now, what was that again, Commissioner?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to ask Gibby a little bit more about her comments before we heard from Sarah regarding the construction sites. I just wondered if she could give us any specifics about our construction workers and what type of, just what type of, what is happening exactly in that environment? And what are we doing about to help them?
Thank you for the question. We are just seeing some clusters in a number of construction sites. And as we have conversations within those sites, these folks quite often work closely together. We're not seeing the use of masks. We're not seeing social distancing. So it's been an opportunity for us to have conversation with management about the resources they need to make available and the opportunities for using those resources appropriately among the folks that work for them. But it's also presented an opportunity to have some educational sessions with some of the staff, I mean, some of the folks that work in construction to help them understand what's going on at their sites and why they are taking, probably taking some of this home to their families. So it's just come to our attention that this is occurring in our community and we're paying close attention to it. I do know that there's been some work in that industry to look at how to better educate and make resources available to the industry as well, and we're pleased about that. So we do hope to see some improvements in this, and we're keeping a very close eye on it.
Thank you for that, Gibby. Could you elaborate a little bit more and tell us, like, how many individuals, you know, you're referring to? And where were the construction sites? Were they in the city of Charlotte? Were they in the towns? You know, can you just give us, I mean, I can just already anticipate questions that we're going to hear. So can you give us some idea about where you're talking about and how many individuals? Maybe how many people you have working on it?
So I don't have specific numbers of individuals that have been infected. We've seen, I think we've seen some sites where we've seen five, six, seven individuals that have tested positive, possibly a little more than that, but not, we're not talking about an entire crew. And these locations have been spread throughout the community, so it's not one particular area where we're seeing this. It's usually the, I mean, the ones that we've seen, I think, are the larger construction sites at this point. And so it's all the more reason for us to continue to educate and work with those as well as the ones where we've not seen infections to make sure that we don't see those in the future. So again, I have a number of staff who are having conversations with those sites and working with them to try to improve the work environment for their personnel.
Well, thank you, and I hope as time goes on and you have more information, you could share that with us and the public. Thank you. That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Scarborough, you have any questions?
I have no questions. I have no questions at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I do have a motion on this, and maybe you want to do that after we ask questions or you're directed now.
This is your time.
All right. Well, look, I believe that there are a lot of loose ends with respect to our response. I don't mean that in a negative way, just that there are a lot of things that are going on at one time. And I feel like we need to bring these ends together so that we can have a a complete plan for responding to the pandemic. And I've mentioned this before, and so I think what we need now is to do something more formal to address these issues and help us have a plan to reopen and recover from COVID-19. So at this point, Mr. Chairman, I move that we begin a process to create a Mecklenburg County COVID-19 reopening and recovery task force for the purpose of constructing a comprehensive plan for Mecklenburg County to guide our reopening process in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and to set a course for rebuilding our community in the aftermath of this pandemic in the areas of public health, behavioral health, hardships suffered by working families, housing and homelessness, employment, education, business, the nonprofit sector, among others. Members of this task force would consist of a range of experts and others to be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we would ensure that any recommendations that flow from the county manager's business roundtable would also be included in this plan. So that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
You heard the motion. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second. This is Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell.
It's moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Susan Rodriguez-McDowell. Madam clerk, let's set our time for our listeners on this issue. Now we'll entertain debate on the motion because I'm sure people would like to make comments. And if we'll set the timer for no more than five minutes, we'll start at the top. Commissioner Kopp.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Fuller, I appreciate your bringing this up. I guess I, since I'm just, you know, I know you sent us an email right before the meeting about it, but so this was kind of a surprise. I guess I would want to, I mean, we have the governor that's going to make some comments. I guess there's part of me that would feel more comfortable to wait to, out of respect to our governor, and since we're under the governor's order right now, and to see what, you know, his plans might be. And I know the manager has been working with a group of business leaders. So I guess I'm, there's part of me that's what, I'm kind of reluctant because I want to see what our governor has to say. Is it necessary to, that we vote on this tonight, Commissioner Fuller? I mean, could you maybe give us some more information about what your ideas are?
Well, if I can respond to it, or...
Okay, Commissioner Fuller, you can respond to that.
Okay, thank you. So I appreciate that, Commissioner Kopp. And I agree with you that we do want to hear from the governor. And I think that his phasing in reopening is a good plan. The, what it doesn't answer, though, are issues that are particular to Mecklenburg County. It doesn't help us see how we're going to reopen our county. We are the largest county in the state still. And the governor's plan is a statewide plan. And there are at least some areas where we might have different concerns than maybe smaller counties would. So the purpose of this task force, then, is to talk about Mecklenburg and to figure out what do we need to do? What are our concerns? What plans can we put in place to reopen? I think people are looking for leadership from us, and I think we need to do that in a very comprehensive and organized way. So far, it's been kind of here and there, a lot of things going on. And I just think we need to bring these things together. And so what I'm asking for tonight is for us to vote on creating this process, to create the task force. And then my thinking is that we would actually formally create the task force at our June 2nd meeting so that we would have time between tonight and June 2nd to actually put in place a resolution that formally creates the task force. But what I'm asking for tonight is for us to give the okay to begin that process to create the task force.
Okay, Commissioner Scarborough, you have any questions? Related to the motion? Okay, we'll go to Commissioner District One.
This is Commissioner Powell. I'm trying to read both screens. So on your proposal, Commissioner Fuller, it says, "among other things." So we could include seniors as well, correct? This is just...
Right, I did not. Right, I didn't want it to be a comprehensive list. I'm not, that's what I think we need to work on between now and the second.
That was my only question. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner District Two.
This is Commissioner Lee. Can you all hear me?
We can.
I want to make sure that I was recorded as seconding the motion by Mr. Fuller, but I'm not sure you heard me. That's why I was saying it's speaking. My concern is that we have been elected by the people of Mecklenburg County to lead this county as best we can in terms of making decisions that will impact our people in this county and in the surrounding townships who falls within the confines of Mecklenburg County. So I am supporting this motion because of that reason. We know best. We are listening to the governor, yes. We're going to adhere to what the governor says that we must do and should do. But we must also remind ourselves why we were elected and who elected us to make those kinds of decisions that will address those issues that impact Mecklenburg County beyond that of others. So I'm supportive of the motion and will continue to be as long as District Two will allow me to represent them. So the task force is a must. And I think the recommendation that we appoint those individuals as members of the county commissioner so that we can move this community in a direction because of the Republican Convention is coming here. We don't know what's going to happen, don't know how it's going to happen, but we must come up with some way to make sure that we provide security for this community. So that's what I had to say to the body. And those of you who are speaking, please speak a little bit louder so that I might hear what you're saying, and thank you.
Commissioner District Four.
So I definitely support the motion proposed by Commissioner Fuller. Particularly as we understand that the Business Leaders Roundtable was a, is really a short-term type of project. And so I do think that we need something more sustainable and long-term to stand the community up. The one thing that I would point out, though, and ask us to consider, and Commissioner Fuller, as we talk through this in the future, right now in the community, there are about 100 different task forces out there working on a myriad of different things. And so I'm hoping that what we can do is kind of identify these main task forces that are out there to include some of those folks so that, one, we don't have redundancy. Two, everyone could have visibility to a comprehensive plan. We have buy-in so that we can all be moving in the same direction, have visibility to what's going on, who's saying what. And really, as the county, and correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Fuller, but I suspect that what you want us to do is lead this and quarterback this thing and then get everybody else rowing in the same boat. And I'm definitely all for that, for sure.
Yes, sir. And in fact, that's exactly it. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of task force. And so I just think we need something to bring all this stuff together so that, you know, everybody can see the hymnbook and we can all be marching in the same direction.
Yeah, well, good. I wanted to make sure that I was trying to keep you on the same page. So I definitely support the motion. I think it's a great idea. And that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner District Five.
Thank you, Chairman. And no questions, just that I intend to support this effort.
Commissioner District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really, I'm glad I got to second this motion because I think it's really important that we, that we not only look at business, right? Because I know we have our business roundtable, and I think that's super important. But I think it's also very important that we realize there's more to this, to reopening than just business. You know, there's a lot more at stake. And so I really appreciate Commissioner Fuller's motion, and so I don't really have any questions. So thank you for allowing me to make that comment.
Okay, so I think that brings it to my opportunity to talk about this. I share some of the concerns that Commissioner Kopp mentioned. I got this 15 minutes before our meeting. Commissioner Darrell mentioned, there are lots of people in our community working on a lot of things and have been working on them for weeks. And to think that all of them are going to stop what they're doing...
I would say that.
Follow, excuse me. We have a rule that says you don't speak over people. And so to think that they are going to stop what they're doing and then follow the county... And so to think that they are going to stop what they're doing and then follow the county causes me some concern. And that concern has already been expressed when it came to the notion that we wanted to stand our stay. Many of the towns balked at that. Many of the towns are having their own plans for their own town. The city of Charlotte is developing its own plan. So I, I, I am real concerned about this because if we do it, we can leave people out, as you've already heard, the many organizations that are working on this. And while it sounds like a good idea, we are 100 counties, but one state, which is why the governor has the plan for opening up the state, not just one county, but all. And, and I, I, you know, you know, to me, it's like thinking that we're going to go out there and all of a sudden, everybody's going to be in favor of some plan that we adopt. Because we adopted, doesn't sound like a very good idea. Maybe had something happened like this when this first happened and people were talking about reopening the county and the state. You know, it's, it's almost the kind of stuff that I see in counties around us. I watched last night, as a county commissioner, in fact, the chairman of the county commissioner, decided to open up his restaurant and was cited for that because it went against the governor's plan. So now, whatever we come up with, we've got to make sure that it is not inconsistent with what the governor is planning as it relates to opening up the entire state. I will tell you that when we did the stay-at-home order, that order didn't just happen because I thought it was a good idea or because the county manager thought it was a good idea. It happened because the townships and the mayors had buy-in and the city mayor had buy-in. And now it's almost as if, though, we're going to go out and do our own thing and expect everybody to fall in line. I don't know that that's a good idea. So I, I have some real concerns about this. And, and I don't know that the time that we will allot to discuss this tonight will make me feel any more comfortable about it.
Mr. Chairman, could I respond?
Sure.
So I, I appreciate your concerns. And I, and I think all of those things, those concerns that you just mentioned, can be answered in the course of this task force's work. It wasn't my intention to, and this task force doesn't need to obviate everybody else. But what I'm seeing, and I've spoken about this at other meetings, that, that we don't have a plan. We don't have a plan for our county reopening and recovering from this pandemic. And while there are a lot of good things going on, a lot of things that people are talking about and discussing, the county does not have a plan. And, and certainly if the city has one, I think it would be remiss of us not to have a plan for reopening. Again, being absolutely consistent with the governor's reopening order, absolutely. But there are a lot of questions that that order does not answer that we have to answer in our community about reopening. So anyway, I, I think we can address the concerns that you expressed.
Okay, let me let the county manager respond.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, obviously, I will follow the direction of the board, whatever the majority of the board decides. Again, I will say, consistent with what the chairman said, there was a lot of things that are already going on across the county. And, you know, you'll just have to try to figure out how you tap into all of that work that's being done and try to put that together in some kind of form so you can, you know, put together some countywide plan. I guess I just want to understand how this motion relates to the CARES funding and the availability of the CARES funding. And is it your intention that this task force would decide how those dollars get spent? Is that a decision that the Board of County Commissioners is going to make? We need to understand that because, again, you know, we only have till December 30th to spend that money. So if we want to spend it and make an impact, we need to have some decisions from the board about how we're going to go ahead and do that. That's really my biggest concern.
And I think we'll be able to do that. I think we'll be able to do both things.
So let me, let me make sure I'm clear on this. This is going to be a commission-led, something that they're going to develop? Or are we going to ask the staff to develop a plan?
Well, I want us, both the board and the staff, to work together. That's why my motion is to begin the process so that by June 2, when we have our meeting, we'll have a, a resolution ready that will address the questions that have been raised and will formally create the task force. So all I'm asking tonight is for us to start that process. And we would work with staff in order to create, put together a resolution that makes sense, that addresses the concerns that people have so that when we present the resolution for approval on June 2, it will have answered these questions, these structural questions and, and other questions at that time.
And so will the towns and the mayor of Charlotte get an opportunity to weigh in on this as they did the stay-at-home order?
I would expect so, absolutely. That's why I think we need staff help to put that resolution together.
Okay, are there any unreadiness as it relates to this issue? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on this motion. We'll start with Commissioner Cuthem.
Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't get a chance to respond to your last, can I say one thing before I vote? Or you just want to vote?
This one.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Just, again, I appreciate the exchange, and I did lose sound for a few minutes. But I will, I will be voting no on this because of the timing. And I just don't know about needing a task force to have a meeting. I think we can always have a meeting in our community, and our community needs decisions, not... And so I just think we don't, this task force elevates it to something that, to me, it just sounds like we have, we don't have enough information. So that's kind of where I am. So I will vote no.
All right, Commissioner Cuthem.
Commissioner who?
Fuller.
I.
Commissioner Scarborough.
I.
Commissioner District One.
This is Commissioner Powell. I vote no.
Commissioner District Two.
Yes.
Commissioner District Three. Oh, no, wait, I vote last. Four.
Yes.
Commissioner District Five.
Yes.
Commissioner District Six.
I vote aye.
Okay, and the chair votes no. All right, Madam Clerk.
The motion carries six to three.
Commissioner Fuller, I am going to charge you with working with the county manager to develop this proposal that you will bring forth on June 2.
Very well. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Now, we'll go back to our questions on COVID-19. We ended with Commissioner Cuthem, Commissioner, and no, we ended with Commissioner Fuller. Okay, Commissioner Scarborough, do you have any questions relative to COVID-19?
None. I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner District One.
This is Commissioner Powell, and I would just also request some more information on construction sites because I have been called by construction workers about their own concern. So that would be nice to have. And, and that ends my questions.
All right, Commissioner District Two.
Thank you. My, can you hear me well?
Yes.
I mean, can the body hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
I hear you.
My concern is the problem of the construction workers knowing that they have had a problem anyway of close working conditions. That was a known fact. And to say now that we are looking into it from a different perspective bothers me as it did with not putting testing sites on the West Side of town. So I'm hoping that whatever takes place that we will move swiftly to impact that group of individuals who find themselves in those close conditions and to give us an accurate presentation of what we intend to do and when we intend to do it. That bothers me seriously because of the families involved and the community who, who values the lives of our people. So I hope that they will not feel the lateness of starting to help them as the West Side did with the coming in of testing at a late time or a later time. So I hope you understand my rationale for what I'm saying in support of making sure that the county will do more than just give us a washover, but to give us an accurate support of what you intend to do and when you intend to start doing it to save the lives of all of our people. Thank you.
And your comment, Commissioner Lee?
Yes, it does. I said thank you.
Okay, Commissioner District Four.
Gibby, thank you for the, the new dashboard. I think it looks good. I want to ask you real quick, does that dashboard include all the same data points that the current data that is reflected on the MECK NC site have?
I think so. I'll have to double-check on that, though, just to make absolutely sure. It definitely includes everything that we've been looking at, and we're looking at the same trends and the same data they are. The only difference is we are not, we are not recording the data around the number of cases and the number of deaths in long-term care facilities. The state has that on their dashboard. The reason we quit doing that is that data conflicted with what we were producing because we were only doing Mecklenburg County residents. And the state reports whether they, it doesn't matter whether they live in Mecklenburg County or not, they report those, with those sites, and it just got too confusing. So we quit doing that. But I'm thinking that that might be the only piece that we are not reporting at this point.
Okay, so it still reports the zip codes, numbers by zip code and race and so on and so forth, the, the primary elements that we were looking at.
Well, that won't show up on that dashboard, but that's a report that we'll continue to put out twice a week.
Yeah, okay, so that'll come out twice a week, but not on the dash? How, how come not on the dashboard? Just, just out of curiosity.
It just hasn't been populated yet. That, that could be something that we could add to it. We, we took the main data that creates the trends that we're looking at in terms of helping us understand what's going on in the community and, and put that in the dashboard. But we can probably add that if that's something that you'd like. The reality is, you know, we don't, we haven't put any maps or demographics in that data. Looking at that and populating that on a daily basis is a bit challenging. So that's why we're continuing to do the other report twice a week.
Right, so even if we added on the dashboard and we just say, hey, this data is good, the way we do it now, this data is good through May 17th or what have you. But I, I think having it all in, in one place is, just be convenient. So I don't...
Yeah, we'll, we'll look and see whether that's an option and, and see what we can do with that.
All right, and then my next question is, you know, I know we have this clustering of positives at the construction sites. Does the modeling, our modeling or, or data collection, does it show clustering in any other industries that are out there?
We have had some cluster in a facility, a warehouse, not a warehouse. It's a facility that, it's, it's a bakery, a warehouse bakery that we've been working with. And they've done a lot to improve the situation there. We have gotten lots of questions from the media about food processing, especially meat, meat processing. We have not seen anything in any of the facilities that we have in Mecklenburg County around that.
I got you. My last question is this, and, and I think this is, is going to be important for, you know, the, the general public to understand. As we're increasing the testing, obviously, you know, we're seeing the numbers increase, but we want to increase testing. You drill down and really help people understand the indicators that you're looking at. When we, when you talk about percent positive, having a decrease there, can you really drill down so that the public can understand what those indicators that you're looking at that show that we are moving in the right direction, although they may see numbers rising?
Exactly. So as we see the numbers rise, what we're looking at is, in our community, are we seeing increased positivity rates, which would show us that we're having increased spread in the community? What we're seeing is a decrease in positivity rates because we're testing more people, but fewer of those people that we are testing are positive, which indicates that we're not seeing the spread increase in our community. And we're actually seeing it decrease a little bit as we increase our testing. So it's, it's going in the direction that we're looking for, just seeing, I mean, you would expect, because we know we still have COVID-19 in our community, that if we increase testing, we're going to see increased numbers of people who are positive.
Right, but I, I just wanted to make it clear so people tie into some of the decisions that are being made, or recommendations, I should say, that are coming out of the Business Leaders Roundtable and other places. And of course, the governor will be on tomorrow. But I, I just want to make it clear so people understand that there's not that one-to-one correlation around community spread and an increase in the numbers that they see as far as testing is concerned. So that concludes my questions and comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Gibby. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Commissioner District Five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gibby, I have two questions from you. I have been, I've been meeting every week with a group of professionals that work with seniors in nursing home and long-term care facilities, kind of getting their feedback on how things are going. And I want to raise up two concerns that they have shared with me. One is about testing in nursing home and long-term care facilities. And that many talk about the frustration about trying to get a baseline so they know, you know, who, you know, testing all of their staff and all of their residents and how hard it is to get those tests. And one request they made was around the idea of getting the mobile units to come out to their facilities. Is that a possibility?
It's something we can explore. What we have been focused on is the facilities that have, that are in outbreak status because we know we have COVID-19 in those facilities. We would like to do broader testing, but you need to understand that we have over 200 long-term care facilities in Mecklenburg County. And with the testing availability right now, we've been focused on those that we know have cases so that we can try to prevent further spread in those facilities. We are doing more in terms of education and training and guidance to the facilities that don't have cases right now, but that doesn't include testing.
Well, I just...
I believe we are going to have more available. It's just, we're just having to work through that right now.
Well, I just wanted to share that request with you. You know, as we try to get testing out to very vulnerable populations, and I've been, you know, of course, a, a big proponent of going into black and brown communities, I think we might also want to expand that, that strategy to nursing home and long-term care facilities. A number of, a number of people talked about how difficult it is if they have a concern with a resident, actually getting a resident to a doctor. And so having that testing in those facilities come to them would be a huge benefit, especially as they're trying to get a baseline for their home facilities. So I just wanted to share that with you. The second concern I wanted to share with you, Gibby, is that seniors just... The second concern I wanted to share with you, Gibby, is that that seniors just continually talk about how important it is that people wear masks in the community and they are extremely frustrated and downhearted and and sad with the lack of participation in the community around wearing masks. So what are our options as commissioners as we think about what mask-wearing protocols we have? You know, what are our options? Is that something that we could, you know, ask you to require?
Um, well, at this point, uh our county is uh working to be consistent with the governor's uh plan and that includes strong recommendation around masking, not requiring. Um, there are some challenges with requiring. Um, and one of those has to do with availability of masks. Uh, a second is enforcement of that. Um, a third is there are individuals who are challenged to wear masks because of medical reasons. And the third are individuals who are challenged with wearing masks for mental health issues. Um, so we have to consider all of those issues as we think about whether we actually require masks or not. I do know that um in conversation with uh Dina, had a lot of conversation with the Business Roundtable about doing a lot more in terms of encouraging and recommending and getting messaging out around masking, um looking at some creative ways to do that. So I I know there's going to be additional effort to try to get people to um consider wearing masks.
Well, I just want to share with you that seniors feel like they don't feel safe and that if they, you know, but they don't want to be locked down in their homes either. And so, or in their facilities. And so, you know, um I and I hear what you say about the exceptions and people who have anxiety and I certainly, I certainly am compassionate to that. But I also think that um we could, we could work around exceptions, but it's easier when it's generally the rule. And so I just share that with you is I think people will do what their government asks them to do generally, especially if it's to the benefit and the health of others, especially our senior population. And and we communicate that. So um I just wanted to share with you their concern and their their sadness and their depression around the fact that they they go out and see people aren't wearing masks and that's very hard for them because they feel like they're gonna get sick. Um, and then I I want to ask a question about the hotels. I don't, I I don't know if this is a Sarah question or a Gibby question, but so Sarah, we we've spent to date one point six million dollars on our hotels. Is that correct?
So we have spent or encumbered one point six million, yes, and that includes for food and security as well as the hotel leases.
So that's eight hundred thousand dollars a month.
Uh, some of the costs, for example, the hotel leases, that includes a lease through the end of the term, so it's not really per month, but we can.
Oh, I see. Okay. So what is the total amount that we think we'll be spending on hotels? Or what what you're asking in your budget that you you forecast?
Yeah, we're forecasting through December thirtieth, under the CARES Act, we had forecasted five point eight million dollars that would cover both our current costs to date and our future costs through December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Now, with the news that came late this afternoon, again, this is now something that we're looking at using FEMA funding for, given the state match that allows us to get a hundred percent of those costs recovered potentially. So it would come out of our coronavirus relief proposal.
Well, uh and you know, estimating uh you know, almost six million dollars on a hotel, that's a, that's a lot of money of public dollars going into that. So what, can we get a report on just, you know, what? I mean, I think the, I think the public ought to know what we're doing with that, especially the benefit to the community on what we're doing and how, I know, like the strategy behind it and why it's important and and so can we, can we get more information on that?
Happy to work with uh the others, uh pull something together, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. No, no other questions, Chairman.
Commissioner District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, so Sarah, while you're there, um, on slide thirteen, um, can you um explain the uh two point seven million for employee and facility safety? Can you just help us uh, you know, with a little detail on that? Okay, on my on mine, it's uh the the page before that i- is thirteen. So maybe go to twelve. Yeah, that one. On mine, that says thirteen on mine.
Okay, so are you looking for the the clarity on the cost to date?
Yeah, the employee safety, uh facility safety, two, two million, uh two point seven million there. I'm just trying to understand, like, what does that include? Like, what is that talking about?
Yep, so that would include the laptops and accessories and other technology that we have acquired to allow the county to work remotely.
Oh, okay.
Yep, it also includes our personal protective equipment purchases to date.
Okay.
Also some enhanced cleaning equipment and supplies for those who are still working on promise.
Okay, got it. That's from another, okay, there's a, there was another list that had those items and I just didn't see it added up that way. Um, and so the small business, um we 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 thought previously that it would be eligible, but now we find out that it's not eligible, is that right?
Yes, exactly right. And Starla might be able to add a little bit more to that. This part of the uh the continu- the very fluid nature of the guidance uh for all of these different funding streams. I don't know if Starla has anything to add or the county manager?
Yeah, this is Starla. I think that's summed it up.
Starla, are you, can you respond to that?
I am. I think Sarah um definitely summed it up. We we continue to track and monitor the guidance issued by the department by the Treasury Department and the federal government. And so, you know, our updated information did provide clarity on whether or not that was eligible to be used.
Okay, okay. Um, just wanted to make sure I had that right. Um, so we we might have had a little false sense of security um on what was covered and what was not covered previously. So now we're sort of getting a rude awakening, maybe. Um, so that's just interesting. Um, I was wondering.
Clarification that may be helpful is that the decision was made to make the emergency small business stabilization fund loan investment prior to the CARES Act um being, you know, knowing our allocation and and all of that. So I think that's uh just for context, if that's helpful.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much.
Missup, Commissioner Rodriguez, Rodriguez-Mendel. Keep in mind, that's a loan fund, so those dollars will come back to the county over time. So that's the reason why it's not eligible, excuse me, for CARES funding.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, I I'm really, uh, I was wanting to ask, um, can you guys maybe while you guys are still there, Sarah, um, I've heard that, you know, obviously, we've, we've all heard that the city got a hundred and fifty-plus million um where we've got thirty-nine million. Can someone just sort of uh give context around why the city gets so much more than the county?
Yes, this is because to make the funds go out quickly, we got a big win in up getting the direct funding, but they had to use an existing CDBG formula. And the way that formula works is based on population. And since the city is over five hundred thousand and most of the population of the county, they got the majority of the funds that were to be distributed within the county.
Okay.
Formula.
Okay.
And Commissioner, this is Starla, if I might add as well. It was, it's a really big win for the county that we were able to still receive our portion of the funding directly versus having the process of also going through the state as other counties are having to do. And so while the cities was pulled out because they have the bulk of, you know, the five hundred thousand themselves, Mecklenburg County was still recognized as a large entity, one of only three in the state. And we were able to pull out that money or receive our money directly from the Treasury, thereby enabling us to certainly meet the needs a little faster than going through the process of state government, which is a totally different process with different rules and submittals that the other counties are required to adhere to.
Okay, well, part of the concern I'm trying to get to is the towns. Um, so if, you know, the city's got that, you know, huge amount of money that they're gonna be able to give way more relief to small businesses whereas uh for the county, you know, the towns will be looking to us uh for that kind of relief. And so I'm just, I'm trying to get a handle on on that because currently we only have, I believe it was just one million in our micro loans, which was going to the towns and the ETJ areas. Is, do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so I'm just really concerned about, you know, the, obviously, the the six towns um around Mecklenburg, around Charlotte. And so I wanted to see, you know, how we're going to uh be able to address their their needs. So that was one of my concerns, but um, so I think that's something that we still have to talk about, right? I mean, that's, that's part of what we have to talk about in uh the amount that you're asking us to give direction. Um, so that's why I wanted clarification there. But um, can I ask Gibby about the contact tracing real quick? Um, Gibby, can you please um sort of help me understand? I know there's a lot of testing sites. It's not just the county that does um testing. It's it's other places too. So does the county do all of the contact tracing? Or do anyone, does anyone who does actual testing, do they do their own contact tracing?
Now, all of the positive results are reported to county public health and we do the contact tracing for all of the positives. Which means we, we investigate the positives, understand what the situations are and then contact the individuals that need to quarantine that have potentially been exposed. So we isolate and quarantine and that all happens through the health.
Okay, so uh for, so the whole county, uh the, our, our public health is reaching out no matter where people live, no matter where they got tested, they're gonna get reached out to by public health.
Correct.
Okay, and so I understand um we are, some of our uh um, oh gosh, what's the term? Um, the audit folks, they're, they're being redirected to that. Can you tell us just an overall number of how many people are doing that?
Um, we're, right now, we have about thirty, but we're expanding that um because of the increase in numbers.
Okay, do you have an ideal number?
Okay, uh, Commissioner, your, your time has expired. No more questions at this time. All right, um.
Just a little question.
Let me um, let me follow up on a couple of those questions, Gibby. I I I had some of the um, the same concerns. So, Dina, with the, the thirty-nine million coming directly to the county and with the city being able to get their appropriation, does that mean that all of the funds that we're spending is spent outside of the city of Charlotte? How does that work?
No, we're spending our money on things that are, that are part of what we believe is in response to um, you know, our public health response to COVID nineteen. So that could be within the city of Charlotte or it could be outside the city of Charlotte. There's nothing geographic about how we're spending our dollars.
Okay, so as it relates to um the things that the city might spend its dollars on, how do we ensure parity outside of the city? For example, if the city decided they wanted to spend funds on, oh, I don't know, any, any given item inside the city of of Charlotte, how do we ensure that uh the towns or the unincorporated area have access to those same things? Or is it possible that we might be, have different interests, I guess?
Well, I guess that's what um this uh task force that you're creating will have to really make that determination. Uh, but the city is not planning to spend any of their money outside the city of Charlotte. So if there's needs that have to be addressed in the six towns and the unincorporated area and the board decided they wanted to address those, that would have to come out of the balance of our thirty-nine million dollars.
So if, if, if if the city's doing something inside the city limits and we want to see those same things happen in the unincorporated area and in the towns, then those funds, as long as they're COVID-related, would come out of the thirty-nine million.
And if they meet the statutory requirements, yes.
Okay. Um. All right, let me, let me, let me just, just stop right there. Um, could we put back up, I think it's slide page thirteen, is it page thirteen? Maybe it's the other one that has the whole thirty-nine million proposal. Okay, thank you. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that one.
Right, okay. So, so uh this is the manager's proposal as to how we should spend the thirty-nine million dollars. As I understand it, um, that proposal follows the strategy that was outlined in one of the other pages that um was put before us. And so if that is the strategy that we are going to follow, um, then of course we would have to appropriate the monies accordingly. These are broad categories, one, two, three, four, five, six, I guess.
You've already appropriated thirty-nine million dollars. You did that at the last meeting. Um, and so now the question is, how is it gonna be spent? So we've already spent five point nine. We believe that for internal county purposes, we have an additional twelve point three million of things we need to spend if we want to continue doing the hotels to the end of the year, what we need to do to our facilities in order to get them ready for employees to return. And then there's twenty, about twenty-one million dollars left that we have not um allocated to anything. And that is the twenty-one million that we are looking for direction from the board and we would spend that according to what you tell us to do. Um, but the funds have already been appropriated. So there's no additional action required from that perspective.
Okay, is there a proposal from staff um who has been following all of this on a regular basis as to how we should appropriate the twenty-one million?
Well, there's another slide in here that had some of these broad buckets um that we, that we talked about. Um, you know, it depends on how you want to, what your, what the priorities are. And I think, again, um, it's really gonna depend on what this task force, I think. I mean, I'm still not clear on the role of the task force, if it's gonna just coordinate activities or if it's gonna get funding recommendations. I'm still not a hundred percent clear on what that's gonna look like. Um, but, you know, if if the desire is to do, you know, economic relief for small business, then we would have to take a look at that. We just need some direction in these broad buckets, how you want to spend the money, and then we can go back and try to put together some more specific proposals for your consideration.
Okay, so I know this was expected to be voted on tonight, but given the fact that uh we were not anticipating that there would be a task force, I think it would probably not be fair to try to um determine how these funds would be spent without at least giving uh the task force an opportunity to determine what it is that their overall goals and objectives are and whether or not these funds might be better appropriated for that purpose. So is there a rush on approving this tonight?
No, there's no rush on approving this tonight, but I, and I said this before and I'll say it again, you know, we have to expend every dollar, write the check by December thirtieth. So I just want to make sure we're a hundred percent clear on, there's some urgency on the timing so that we don't leave any money on the table. We don't want to write a check back to Treasury. We want to make sure that we spend this money and have a positive impact on our community for COVID relief. So uh no, not tonight, but we need to get some direction fairly soon to put these programs in place.
So, so I agree with that. And so since Commissioner Fuller is gonna be working with you and staff to develop that, um, maybe we can have a proposal on June second that would incorporate um recommendations as to expenditures of the um twenty-one million.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, at this time, we are going to go back to um our public hearings, not public hearing. Are they hearings?
Yes, sir, public hearings.
All right. Um, all right. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion.
Commissioner, before you open up the uh floor for the uh hearings, I want to make you and the board aware and for the record uh that in light of recent legislation uh to account for public hears in a remote setting, the statute now allows and has recently amended the board to take action tonight. But the item that you actually approve, should you approve these matters, will not be effective uh until the twenty-first. In other words, the statute now. In other words, the statute now allows twenty-four hours after the action on the board for additional comments, should there be any.
All right, thank you. So just FYI for the maker of the motion, please note that these a, action items will not take place prior to the twenty-third. All right, so with that, with that said, the chair will entertain a motion to open a public hearing for the closing of a portion of the right-of-way of Net Road. Is there such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I approve, I, I make that motion.
Okay, move by Commissioner Harding, is there a second?
This is Commissioner Jarrell, I second that.
Okay, move by Commissioner Harding, seconded by Commissioner Jarrell. Roll call vote, Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
Commissioner, um, Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The hearing is now open. Is there anyone signed up to speak, or is there a presenter, Madam Clerk?
No, Chair Dunlap, there's no, um, presentation, and there are no speakers.
Okay, uh, with that being said, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the order for closing a portion of Net Road right of way.
I still move. Commissioner Scarborough.
Okay, move by Commissioner Scarborough, is there a second? Did I get a second?
Second by Commissioner Harden.
Okay, move by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Harden. Roll call vote. Commissioner Powell.
I have an attorney question before I vote. So if we receive any input in the next twenty-four hours, that will come to us?
If we get additional comments, uh, that would necessitate the board taking an action in, consistent with the board's vote, we'll bring it back at the June second hearing. If it's just additional comments that do not affect the board's vote, then it would just be noted for the record.
Okay. Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Aye.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Aye.
Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That is a unanimous yes vote to close the hearing and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to item sixty-one thirty-seven, which is a tougher hearing of Bradford Preparatory School. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Roll call vote. Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers?
No, Chair Dunlap, there are no speakers for this public hearing.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
I still move, Scarborough.
Public Finance Authority of its Education Revenue Bond, Prep, Preparatory Schools, Series Twenty-Twenty, in the aggregate principal amount, not exceed forty million dollars. Move by Commissioner Scarborough, just second.
Second, Fuller.
Move by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Fuller. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That's a unanimous yes vote to close the hearing and adopt the resolution.
Thank you. We'll move to item sixty-one thirty-eight, tougher hearing for Pioneer Springs Community School. The motion to open the hearing.
So moved, Fuller.
Move by Commissioner Fuller, is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Jarrell.
Move by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Jar, Jarrell. Um, roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
No, there are no speakers.
Okay, at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution, approving the issuance by the Public Finance Authority of its Education Revenue Bond, Pioneer Springs Community School, Series Twenty-Twenty, in an aggregate amount not fifteen million.
I still move, Commissioner Scarborough.
Move by Commissioner Scarborough, is there a second?
Leek, second.
Move by Commissioner Scarborough, seconded by Commissioner Leek. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous vote to close the hearing and adopt the resolution.
All right, agenda item sixty-one forty-two, public hearing, surface water pollution control ordinance revision. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved, Commissioner Fuller.
Second, Scarborough.
Move by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers for this hearing.
Okay, the results of the vote, last vote first, I'm sorry.
That was to open the public hearing.
Yes, the result sum of vote is unanimous. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Now, the public hearing is open, and there are no speakers. Seeing that there are no speakers, uh, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the revise Mecklenburg County Surface Water Pollution Control Ordinance.
Leek saying yes. Scarborough say yes.
Move by Commissioner Leek, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Roll call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leek.
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell.
Aye.
Commissioner Harden.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Madam Clerk, the results?
That was a unanimous yes vote to close and adopt the revision.
All right, at this time, we'll move back to the manager report for item sixty-one sixty-seven. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item, um, on our agenda is to provide an update to the board on our seventh and Tryon redevelopment project. This is an update, um, on the MOU. There is no vote that we are expecting from the board tonight. This is an opportunity to give you an update on where we are with the project, get feedback from you, um, on where we go from here. And so with that, I will turn the, uh, the microphone over to Mark Han, who will do the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager DiOrio, Chairman Dunlap, and members of the board. Tonight, we're asking the board to receive as information an update on the key terms of the memorandum of understanding with BP Metropolitan for the seventh and Tryon redevelopment. I'll be providing an overview of the land ownership and a description of the key terms of the non-binding memorandum of understanding. The board action has more detailed information on these key terms if you'd like to reference that document during the presentation. I'll also be describing three options for the development of affordable housing and seeking guidance from the board on your preferred approach. Next slide. The seventh and Tryon redevelopment project is a coordinated effort by four landowners to combine their property for a one and a half block redevelopment that will transform the area as recommended by the North Tryon Vision Plan. The four property owners and master developer that have coordinated the negotiation and are party to the MOU include Mecklenburg County, the City of Charlotte, the Charlotte-Mecklenburg Library, Bank of America, and BP Metropolitan, the master developer. Next slide. First, I'll describe the property ownership. This slide shows the one and a half block area of the overall redevelopment, which is bordered by North Tryon at the top, Sixth Street on the left, and North College at the bottom. Next slide. Starting on the left, Charlotte-Mecklenburg Library owns about half of the first block. This is the location of the new main library replacement project that we've been working on. Next slide. Mecklenburg County owns the remainder, uh, of this block with the exception of Duckworth Grill at the corner of Seventh and Tryon. And the county-owned property includes Spirit Square and the McGowan and Duke Energy Theaters. Next slide. About a third of the second block is owned then by Bank of America. Next slide. And finally, back on the first block, the city of Charlotte has an alley between the library and county property. They have Arakippa Park at the corner of Sixth and Tryon, a small alley between Duckworth Grill and Spirit Square just off Seventh Street, and another alley within the Bank of America property across Seventh Street. Next slide. Before describing the key terms of the memorandum of understanding, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about the vision for this transformative project. This redevelopment offers a unique opportunity for a public-private partnership that can benefit all of Charlotte Mecklenburg. The vision for this project is to create the region's most open and inclusive corridor by connecting cultural, civic, and learning venues to housing, retail, and office uses. It offers a thoughtful, socially conscious, holistic approach that maximizes public good and value. This redevelopment will be a major milestone on the North Try, of the North Tryon Vision Plan, and a unique catalyst for this key area of Uptown. Next slide. Next slide, please. This project is more important now than ever to a community in need of an economic lift and a boost in civic spirit. It will generate new tax base by converting public property to private use and create an estimated six hundred million in development for office, residential, retail, and mixed use. It provides an attractive space for a major corporate office tenant and creative office space to grow talent attraction. The project will bring thousands of jobs to the North Tryon area from construction to opening. It delivers affordable housing, and the redevelopment will create engaging outdoor open spaces with a healthy outdoor dining atmosphere. It will also create public parking and meaningful connections to the main library, Airline Theater, and Discovery Place. Next slide. This redevelopment will have a significant economic impact by creating an estimated twelve hundred to fifteen hundred temporary construction jobs and two hundred and fifty permanent facility-based jobs upon opening. This project, including a new office tower, will create capacity for an estimated additional four thousand employees and jobs. The impact for local suppliers during construction is estimated to be seventy-five million. The goal for participation by MWSBE vendors is estimated to generate thirty-five to forty-five million, providing a boost for those local firms. New property tax revenue at full buildout is estimated to add four point one million annually, and new annual local sales tax revenue is estimated to be six hundred, approximately six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Next slide. Next, I'll describe the key terms of the memorandum of understanding, starting with the sale and purchase of the redevelopment site. Total amount of property to be sold to the developer across the one and a half block area, as shown here in yellow, is approximately three point one acres at a sale price of twenty-one point five million. Property will be sold to Metropolitan in one land transaction. Next slide. Of that total area being sold, the county's land accounts for approximately one point oh eight acres at a pro-rata value of approximately seven point four million dollars. This assumes retaining only the McGowan and Duke Energy Theater portions of Spirit Square. Upon execution of the master development agreement, Metropolitan will deposit five hundred thousand dollars into an escrow account to secure performance of their obligations under the agreement, and that deposit will be credited against the purchase price of the property at closing. Next slide. The next key term describes the demolition of existing facilities and abandonment of alleyways. Prior to closing and the sale of the property, the county and library will be responsible demolishing portions of the main library and Spirit Square, retaining only the McGowan and Duke Energy Theaters. The library and county will only need to demolish the buildings above grade, so the basements will actually remain in place until the developer starts excavation for the underground parking. Also included in the MOU is a statement that Metropolitan acknowledges the county will be required to give users of Spirit Square at least twelve months prior notice of the commencement of demolition. The city of Charlotte will take actions as required to abandon their alleyways and grant necessary easements for the developer to make improvements under Seventh Street. Next slide. Next, I'll describe the project components. It's anticipated that the redevelopment project will include sufficient parking below ground and above grade to accommodate the program requirements of the main library and the two Spirit Square Theaters, an approximate one hundred and sixty thousand square foot mixed-use structure, an office tower of approximately four hundred and fifty thousand square feet of Class A office space, a multifamily component to be further defined in the development agreement, retail facilities, and affordable housing, which we'll discuss three options later in the presentation. Next slide. The development agreement itself will include the applicable key terms of the MOU, as well as an estimated timeline for commencement of construction of all the project components, a description of the spatial relationships between the project components. The agreement will afford flexibility to Metropolitan as related to design, schedule, and performance, and it will allow adjustment to the timing and development program, subject to the reasonable approval of the stakeholders, and it will include a requirement that Metropolitan use good faith efforts to achieve thirty percent MWSBE participation. Next slide. Regarding grants or other public sector support, the city and county will continue to collaborate on providing not less than a twenty-five million dollar tax increment grant for the public purpose of below-ground and above-grade parking structures. The city of Charlotte will provide two to five million dollars from their community investment plan or other funding sources for improvements by Metropolitan, including streets, utilities, civic spaces, sidewalks, lighting, stormwater management facilities, street trees, and landscaping. Next slide. The MOU includes a requirement that Metropolitan will contribute three million dollars at the closing of the sale of the seventh and Tryon property for enabling affordable housing projects identified by the stakeholders. Metropolitan and the public library will continue to coordinate on the design and construction of both projects to ensure that they don't interfere with each other's work, and in coordination with the county, the library and developer will collaborate and finalize a design for the plaza and common areas of the project. The MOU also includes an exclusivity clause that gives Metropolitan the exclusive right to redevelop the site. This clause requires that during the one hundred and eighty-day period after execution of the MOU, the stakeholders will not enter into any agreement for the sale or redevelopment of their property on this site with any party other than Metropolitan or the buyer. If any stakeholder violates this obligation, it could result If any stakeholder violates this obligation, it could result in a reimbursement to the developer for all of its predevelopment expenses up to a cap of $4.1 million. There will be a separate agreement among the landowners that requires any entity violating the obligation to be solely responsible for paying that reimbursement. Next slide. Next, we'll talk about affordable housing, which has always been a key component of this project and continues to be a core priority. In fact, it is essential for this project to move forward to bring more affordable housing units to Mecklenburg County as soon as possible. Our community's nearly 24,000-unit shortage cannot be solved by any single project, but Seventh and Tryon landowners are doing their part. Delivering on the affordable housing commitment in a responsible manner has required time and careful study. The landowners have evaluated the options, and you'll see how the project can maximize public good with affordable housing along North Tryon and/or around other parts of our community. Next slide. With this commitment in mind, we turn our focus to the affordable housing investment options that are available as the landowners deliver units to the community through the Seventh and Tryon project. On this slide, in the far-left column, you can see these options can be funded through land proceeds from the sale of Mecklenburg County and Bank of America properties and a contribution from the master developer. You can see that county land proceeds provide 7.4 million, and Bank of America land proceeds provides 8.3 million. Adding a $3 million contribution from the development team provides a total of 18.7 million available to invest in affordable housing. You'll note that library land proceeds are not listed here, as those will be invested in the new main library project, the capital expenses. As we break down this 18.7 million further, Bank of America has reserved 4.2 million for contributing to off-site units. That leaves an investment amount of 14.5 million the board can allocate to three options. On the far right, option one is for housing through an onsite master lease right on North Tryon. Option two is for housing on the Enlivian property, and option three is for off-site housing units at other locations in the county. Next slide. Now, we'll discuss the options in more detail. We've broken them down on this slide as uptown options and off-site options. We know there's a desire to have affordable housing in Uptown, and we also know there's been discussion about developing affordable housing off-site. You'll see that the allocation amount of 14.5 million can be applied to any of these three options, or it could even be a mix of the options. That is a decision before you as we finalize the terms of the MOU. First, we'll start on the onsite master lease on the left in column one. Assuming all of the 14.5 million would be allocated to this option, we would be able to offer 36 affordable units within the one and a half block development site along North Tryon. This option provides flexibility for various AMIs and unit sizes as developed by the master developer's residential partner. This option also allows for 30% AMI units. As you can see, the units would have a 20-year affordable term. With approval of the MOU, this option would deliver affordable housing units in the heart of the project with a range of bedroom counts and AMIs. The second option is for the board to allocate proceeds from the land sales to fund affordable housing units that Enlivian could develop on their property adjacent to the Seventh and Tryon project. This option is an opportunity that can be further explored as the number of units and AMI levels are yet to be determined. These units would be developed by Enlivian. The third option is for the board to allocate funding for affordable housing at off-site locations, that is outside of Uptown at multiple locations throughout the county. Bank of America's contribution of 4.2 million will already fund 207 affordable units off-site. If the board allocated the full amount of 14.5 million possibly housing, up to 706 affordable units could be secured. This option primarily provides late-stage gap funding to multiple developments that are in mature stages of planning in mostly high-opportunity areas around the county and possibly some preservation of existing affordable units as well. By working with key partners in affordable housing, the county would be able to enhance existing affordable housing funding sources and enable bringing this housing to market faster. This option delivers cost-effective unit production, as these units will be developed by local affordable housing developers and utilize traditional sources of financing and subsidies such as low-income housing tax credits, or LIHTC, and the Housing Trust Fund. Examples of off-site locations include the Scalybark Project, Caldwell Supportive Housing, and the YWCA on Park Road, to name a few. Next slide. This slide details one potential illustrative example of the number of affordable housing units and AMI levels for each of the three options with a total investment of 18.7 million. If you choose option one, the onsite master lease, you can see that the 14.5 million investment delivers 36 units at the full range of 30%, 60%, and 80% AMI levels. The average AMI level for this option would be 58%. For option two, the Enlivian development on their property, the number of units and AMI levels remain to be determined as part of their development plan for their property. With option three, off-site development, Bank of America's 4.2 million enables the delivery of 207 units with an average AMI level of 46%. On the bottom row, you can see the totals for all options, including the total number of units, the average AMI level, and the number of units at each respective AMI level. Obviously, should you choose some combination of funding across the options, the numbers shown here would change. This is simply one example in this case. It should be noted that option one has fewer units than option three due to the higher capital cost of units on the Seventh and Tryon site and the fact that those units are not eligible for certain traditional affordable housing subsidies like LIHTC. Next slide. Assuming we came to an agreed-upon approach to affordable housing, the MOU will be finalized with that information, and the board will consider authorization for the county manager to execute the MOU at the next regular meeting. After execution of the MOU, negotiation of the development agreement would begin. Once the development agreement is finalized, the board would consider approval of that agreement and authorization for the county manager to execute the agreement. After the MOU is executed, we also intend to bring the options for Spirit Square renovations back to the board for selection of a final option and approval of funding. I should note that there is a sense of urgency among numerous parties to finalize the MOU and keep this project moving. Among the many milestones that must be reached, the master developer needs to finalize agreements to land an anchor tenant for the office tower, as well as finalize agreements with component developers of mixed-use commercial and multifamily buildings. We also need certainty on the design of the redevelopment project so we can coordinate the interface between the new main library, Spirit Square, and the pedestrian plazas in the development. Until the MOU has executed, these projects will be on hold due to the needed coordination with the master developer's design. Next slide. And that concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions you might have during your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, but before we move into questions, let me share with the board that I appointed Commissioner Fuller to serve on a committee to address some ongoing issues as it relates to this particular development. So I'd like to make sure that we have all the information. I'd like to hear from Commissioner Fuller and our county manager on the outcome of that meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, are you referring to the meeting that occurred on March 5?
Whatever day it was, I don't remember what day.
I certainly can talk about that. Maybe if we have the county manager first give some some report back on that, because there were other commissioners at that meeting as well, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Fuller, Commissioner Dunlap. So we did have a meeting with all of the property owners as well as the master developer on March 5 to talk about sort of where we go from here, and we have, you know, after five years of work on this project, what you're seeing here tonight is our best effort to be able to bring a project forward that we believe is actually executable in the near term. You know, there's been a lot of discussions over many number of years, and, you know, everybody stayed at the table for a long time to be able to make this work. And this, what we brought today, we think addresses all of the questions that the board has had around affordable housing. It provides a number of options for the board to consider around affordable housing, understanding that affordable housing on North Tryon is a priority, so it provides for that, but also provides for off-site affordable housing and also provides for Enlivian to be able to develop their property if the board should choose to put the proceeds of our property into that project. So I think this is a culmination of many discussions over many years, but we are at the point now where we need to make some decisions to be able to move forward. With that, I can turn it over to Commissioner Fuller.
All right. Thank you very much, and I did attend that one meeting on March 5. Who knew then that we would be entering a pandemic soon after, but I did attend that meeting on the 5th. There were a number of stakeholders there, Bank of America, the city had representation there, the library, as well as Enlivian. And without getting into too much detail about what happened at the meeting, I have to say I was a bit bothered by some things that occurred at the meeting, but the long and short of it is that I think we, while these affordable housing options are certainly edible, I don't know that it's the best that we can do. And in particular, I did have some issues about what I regard as the sidelining of a government entity, what used to be called the Housing Authority, now Enlivian, and where we say that affordable housing is at the core of this project. The choices that we have for affordable housing that will be right there in the Central Business District seem to have been sidelined, while there is a clear opportunity with a fellow public entity to actually produce affordable housing in fairly substantial numbers. And I'm just not convinced that we've tried hard enough to include Enlivian in this project, and I don't propose that we blow up what we've done. I don't propose that at all. I just think we need to work harder to produce for the public affordable housing on that Sixth and Tryon, Seventh and Tryon, that whole block. So think about this. We are making a public investment of about $100 million. If you take the library, $60 million, whatever we're going to spend on Spirit Square is probably going to be about $30 million or so, and then this money here on the Sixth and Tryon, that's almost $100 million in public investment, and if the best that we could tell the public that we got out of it for affordable housing are 36 units, I'm not sure people would think that we tried hard enough. So, and I think for us to be able to get not only units on this property, but also investment in these off-site properties, that's the win-win for everybody. So we get affordable housing in Uptown, and we get to address affordable housing in off-site areas. So what I'm proposing that we do is, again, not to necessarily stop the progress of what's been done so far, but I want this group to link arms with Enlivian and commit to helping Enlivian produce affordable housing on their lot. Now, we understand it'll have to be in phases, because you've already gotten so far with the project that we're talking about, but I need to have a commitment that this group is going to work with Enlivian to produce affordable housing in this Central Business District for no other reason than that you talk about coordination with the library lot. Well, there needs to be coordination with the Enlivian lot, too, otherwise you'll have this shiny whatever project, and then you've got this thing over here that Enlivian owns. So I don't know what that looks like. That's what I think you guys ought to figure out. But there has to be, there has to be an involvement with Enlivian in producing affordable housing in this area. That's my opinion. And like I said, I don't want to get into all the reasons why that hasn't happened to date. No need to air that laundry, but I just think if we're making this kind of public investment, the public's got to see more. Otherwise, affordable housing is just another pretty word that we use, that we don't even mean when push comes to shove. So now is the time for us to actually get it done, and that's what I propose, based on the meeting that I occurred and the meeting I attended and the information I've seen since and the people I've talked to since. So that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Can I have staff to put back up the three options? Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Manager, did you want to respond before I did this?
Well, I think what I would say is that one of the options is to take the proceeds from our land and put it aside for Enlivian to develop their land, and so that is one of the options that, you know, is certainly on the table. That's option two. We still need to get an executable plan from Enlivian, but that's certainly the choice of the board. If you decide that that's what you want to do, then that's an option that's available to you. That's why we created the three of them, so that the board could decide, you know, how they wanted to proceed. And whatever the board decides to do, the whole Seventh and Tryon Committee is going to support that. That's why these options are in front of you. So I would ask you to consider that.
Okay, and one other thing before I go to questions. In option three, my understanding was there was, in addition to the money that VFA was going to spend, which would create the 207 units, wasn't there an additional 700 units?
So, once we started to look at the master lease agreement, you know, that took a bunch of the money away to do that option. So now you only have 207 units with Bank of America's 4 million. But the more money, it all depends on how you want to mix this thing up. So if you decide you want to do fewer units on Seventh and Tryon in the master lease agreement and put them over to off-site housing, you can create additional units. So it really just depends on the mix of how the board wants to proceed. But there, and I did send you earlier a list of all of the affordable housing projects off-site that are waiting to be funded. So there's quite a list there, so you can take a look at that in your email as well. And sort of that's the conversation we need to have, is how do you want to proceed on this affordable housing piece?
Okay, and then the last thing is, if I understand it correctly, if we did the 36 units at Seventh and Tryon, that would be a cost of about $400,000 each unit?
Yes, it's expensive.
Okay. All right. So we'll open it up for questions. We'll start with Commissioner Cockham. There's no vote tonight, so it's just question. Madam Clerk, if you would step to the floor at six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mark, for a great presentation. We have been talking about this for many years, and it's exciting to see that it's, you know, getting, we're getting closer to it. So I know there's been a lot of work on it. I personally, you know, I appreciate the idea about affordable housing uptown, but we have so many people, 30-plus thousand families, and, you know, I just can't feel good about, you know, 36. So I like the idea of the off-site, and Commissioner Fuller, I appreciate the work you've done. But, you know, with all due respect to Enlivian, you know, they were a part of this and a main part of this in the beginning, and then they left us. They left us, the group, and wanted to negotiate themselves, and that was their right. And that was their right. But I'm, I'm kind of having a hard time thinking about going back to support them. When they were part of the initial team and then they left. So I, I'm, you know, I like the idea of the, the last one where we could, you know, make, you know, it's still a very small amount. But it, it, you know, it would certainly help a lot more people than thirty six and we get more bang for our buck. And I like that aspect of it. I'm also, you know, people who are of low end, lower income, moderate income. I, I just am concerned about them loving living uptown because they would not, there's not places that they, it is uptown and it's more expensive. There is not a Family Dollar store or Dollar Tree or a Food Lion or more affordable restaurants. And it, it might not be as comforting, you know, might make us feel good. But to a family or to a senior citizen who might live, might move a little slower as they walk down the sidewalk. They might be more comfortable in an area where there are more things affordable that are closer to them and more. So I, I'm leaning more towards the third option. And I appreciate, there's been a tremendous amount of work by all the partners in this. And our, I really, our county manager and Mark and his team have really, you know, done a great job. And I appreciate all of that. But I'm, you know, I'm leaning more towards more housing. That is the critical need and our data shows that, that the, the public wants this. And I just think if we come back with units that are, that cost us four hundred thousand dollars. I, I think, I think people would, would prefer that we have more units with that money. But that's kind of where I stand. But I don't really have any specific questions. Cause I've, you've answered my questions over the years on this, but thank you very much. That's, ends my comments.
Six, Commissioner Scarborough?
Yes.
Oh, hey, I say go for it. I think that the housing units in the uptown area would certainly do a lot for Charlotte. We have, we've tried and said we're going to do it and not do it. I think we ought to do it. And that's, that's, that's just my thought process about this.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Fuller.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, I certainly appreciate Commissioner Coffin's comments about this. And I do want to say, as I said, I did not want to address what I regard as dirty laundry being aired in that meeting on March 5th. But suffice it to say that I don't think it's as clear as I had been led to believe about Enlivian's participation. And I don't, I don't think it's fair to characterize Enlivian as being somehow selfish. As somehow destroying the deal. The evidence doesn't lead me to that conclusion. Let me say it that way. Having said that, I still think that, you know, we have an entity in this town who, whose mission, very mission by statute. Is to create affordable housing in our community. And the notion that it would not be part of what we say is the central core principle of this project is affordable housing. I just don't think it matches up with the, with the evidence. So, you know, I, I think we can get a bigger win. And the bigger win would be that we would get this offsite housing. I think we can, you know, get a lot more of it. But also get housing on, on this prime property. And I think we can do that by, by in some way joining with Enlivian's portion of the property to accomplish that. And that I think would be a win for everybody. It'd be hard. It's going to be hard, of course, but affordable housing is hard. And, and again, I just think the public would expect more of us than, than just putting thirty six units on that project. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Those are my comments.
All right. Commissioner District Two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking and listening and remembering the length of time that we spent on this. Tell me why did, what is it, Enlivian decide to back out and then come back with us? What was their problem?
Madam Manager.
Mark, do you have, do you want to talk about that?
Yes. So, and Living really has a much different business model and, and I'd say business needs than the other landowners. They have a desire to retain control of their land through a lease. They wanted to have equity in the project. These are all things that is, is part of their typical business model. And they also had a desire to be involved in, in the construction of the affordable housing. Different than that, the remaining landowners desired a cash sale of the property. So that our land proceeds could be used to support affordable housing or other needs. So based on those sort of different models, it finally came to the point that Enlivian decided to pursue direct negotiations with the developer. And then that was something that went on for a few months and, and I guess just did not come to an agreement. That's kind of how, that's how that, that ended up basically.
So how did they come back?
So they're, they're back in this as an option for you to consider investing some of your land proceeds. Or this fourteen point five million that's available. If you wanted to, you have the option to set aside some money for development on their site by Enlivian. And then it would just be a matter of, of determining what that looks like, if, you know, when they would come up with a plan for that.
Thank you.
Setting aside some money for, for development on their property.
Thank you. I, I do see the offering of two hundred and seven units, which would be offsite. And have we determined where those offsites would be? I think you did mention some of those offsite places that units could be built. Is there a guarantee?
So on the offsite units for the four point two million dollars, that is what gives you the two hundred and seven units. And those particular locations are for Scaly Bark Light Rail Project in that area. Caldwell Presbyterian Supportive Housing, the YWCA Park Road project. And it funds about a, there's still a million short on the YWCA. So it, it funds those three or enables funding for those three.
Thank you. My, my concern also is workers who will be able to work downtown and live downtown also. Which might fall under the line of medium income or low income individuals, as we call them, in the complex. So somebody will have to come from somewhere to have jobs to actually be able to afford to even stay down, stay, stay there anyway. So that's a part of my concern. How would that leave this community? As we have said, we want to do the best we can for the least of our people. So I'm concerned about the outcome from that perspective. So I don't have any more questions, but I want to thank you first of all for your presentation tonight. I wish we were in public face to face. And to you, Mr. Fuller, thank you for representing us and coming back to us with a, a report. That did not really give us a decision-making process. You left us hanging. So I still look at the two hundred and seven units versus thirty six units, but thank you so much. I'm, I'm through. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate staff coming back with multiple options. Because I know this thing has been lingering out here for a while. I, I'm not sure if I'm necessarily tracking with the idea completely that because people are socioeconomically disadvantaged. That they would not enjoy uptown living. I'm, I'm not, I'm not necessarily there yet. I do understand the argument about the scattered site units. I get that. And I also would like us to really consider, I mean, you know, we don't, the, the manager even presented this. We don't have just, you know, choice A or B or C. I mean, we could take a combination of all three of these things. And I think that's what Commissioner Fuller was getting to, you know, to a certain extent. You know, how do we get the biggest bang for the buck? And, you know, with that being said, you know, I would like to hear, now that this is out in the open. You know, I would like to hear from Enlivian to really get a better understanding of, you know, their thoughts around this. The second port, point I want to make or ask a question, Mark, can you, how, the total number of units that will be? In option one, not affordable housing units, but the just total number of units?
I do not have that number off the top of my head. I think it was around four hundred, something like that maybe, but I, I think it's, it's lower now. I, I don't have that number right now, but I can get that for you.
So, but we're probably looking around ten, eight to 10% affordable housing units.
Yeah, probably around 10%, yeah.
Around 10%, okay. So I, I want to switch gears a little bit. I want to talk about MWSB real quick. Tell, tell us a little bit about the developer and their track record when it comes. I mean, I know we've got a 30% and I guess we call it a good faith effort. So two questions, what's their track record as it relates to MWSB participation, their other projects? And then help us understand what good faith efforts constitute. And if there is a, any sort of penalty for not meeting our quote unquote good faith effort?
So the, the wording of that is based much on the county's own program. In terms of record, the developer is using a local, large local contractor who has a very good track record with them, MWSB participation. So I would be very optimistic that they would, that they would hit that goal.
And there, but there's no, it, it, again, it, it's, there's not a, a penalty or anything like that. It's not a clawback provision that we have if they don't hit that goal.
So the development agreement is where that kind of language would typically be included. And of course, we're not there yet. We're, we're just now talking about a memorandum of understanding that would get us to a development agreement. So right now, the language is just what you see. It would have to be developed further to include something stronger. And that would occur again in the actual development agreement.
Got it. How, how large is Enlivian's site? Can you remind me of that again? Their portion of the tract?
I believe it was around two and a half to three acres. I don't have the exact figure. Hold on. I'll have to get that for you. I don't have it with me right now.
Okay. And, and, but I want to clarify one thing. We do have the option. If we wanted to spread this, spread our proceeds around to, obviously, which, spread our proceeds around to, to all three of the options. We do, we could do that. Obviously, it would change option one, the number of units we would be referring to at that point, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there anything, and this is, Mr. Chairman, is there anything that would preclude us from, I know time is of the essence. Is there anything that would stop us from bringing Mr. Meacham into maybe our next Tuesday's meeting to, you know, hear some thoughts from Enlivian?
Um, is next Tuesday meeting, that's a public policy meeting?
Yes.
Madam Manager.
That's, that's our straw vote, the budget.
Oh, that's right. Twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
Let me, can I just, I just want to offer something up about Enlivian. When we, the last we talked to them, they told us it would be nine to 12 months before, before they would be able to come up with a plan. And so if the board's desire is to go with option two, you can set, as I said, you can set your money aside and we can see what their plan is. Or you can decide that you're going to allocate our proceeds between number one and number three. But in 12 months from now, if Enlivian comes back to us with a plan, it doesn't preclude the board to decide that they want to allocate some of our fund balance or other funds to support Enlivian in their project. So I don't want it to be perceived, if you don't make the decision now for Enlivian, you can never do it. I think there's opportunities in the future to support them if they come back with, to us with a, with an executable plan. So I want to make sure that that's part of the conversation.
So, so, so Madam Manager, just so I can be clear, and I know this got to be a question in everybody's mind. We can do the deal and decide how we're going to distribute the funds later.
Well, no, I mean, we need to know how you want to distribute the funds so we can finalize the MOU. My point is, is if you, if Enlivian is not prepared to come forward with a plan. It's going to take them a year to come back with an affordable housing, an executable affordable, affordable housing plan. If you decide you want to go with options one and three or some combination thereof. It doesn't preclude us a year from now, if Enlivian comes up with a plan for us to use some of our other affordable housing dollars to support their project. My point is, you can have all three.
I got you.
You don't have to exclude them today and think that they're excluded forever. You can have all three.
Okay. All right. We're at Commissioner District Five.
Thank you, Chairman. And, and I want to just thank my colleagues, Chairman Fuller and Chairman, I mean, not Chairman, but Commissioner Fuller. Commissioner Leek and Commissioner Drell for, for their comments. And just a couple of things, I, I certainly would have liked to have worked with Enlivian on this. I mean, I, I agree completely with, with Chairman Fuller's assessment. And, but I also think that, you know, I, I don't want to, I don't want to wait nine months to figure out where the money's going to go. So I would, I would, I would guess is if we were gonna, if we were gonna do option two, that we would need to hear from Enlivian pretty quickly. About something that feels executable or something that feels like we could at least commit to a certain number of units down the road. And so I just would say that I think, I think we owe it to the public when we exercise this MOU to be able to say, this is how much affordable housing we're going to do. And so I guess, I, I, and I'm fully in support of hearing from Enlivian again. But I just think that they need to, they need to actually give us something that we can talk to the public about. In terms of what that money buys the community. So totally support that idea. I, I do want to say, Mark and to the county manager, I want to thank you for putting in that 12 month notice for Spirit Square. You know, you were, you've been really, you know, patient and listening to the occupants. And certainly you, you recognize how important an asset that is to our community. And I want to thank you for including that 12 month notice in the MOU for the, for the people who are tenants in there now. The artists that, that, that really, you know, provide incredible services to our community out of that building. I do want to say that for me, Mr. Chairman and County Manager, for me to get comfortable toward vote. I would like to vote at the same time on Spirit Square. And here's my argument, you know, we're basically with this MOU, we're voting to, to demolish as the, as the picture shows. We're voting to demolish Spirit Square. And at the same time, I'd like to be able to say, and this is what we intend, and this is the investment that we promised to make to put it back together. And so I think that, I think that it's, I, I, I like the idea of creating a complete project. We know how much we're going to commit to affordable housing. We know how much we're going to commit to Spirit Square. We know how much we're going to commit to the library and to the TIG. And so I would like to see if the complete project, and I think we're close enough to be able to at least put a number on what that Spirit Square commitment could be. It doesn't have, the, the absolute plan zone has to be finalized, but we've seen a number of options. And it seems to me that we could come forward and, and do that vote at the same time. And then the, the, the last thing I would say is, is that I've, I've heard from a, a number of affordable housing advocates. I've ta, I've heard from, uh, a number of affordable housing, um, advocates. Um, and it's, it was very important to them from a symbolic standpoint and for what it means to this community to have affordable housing uptown. And that, um, that, that is an important, that Uptown be available for everyone. And I know that when this project initially started, that that was the idea. Not of off-site affordable housing, but that this project would be to create affordable housing uptown. And so while, um, so I, I don't want to, sometimes justice is, is expensive. And, but those 36 units mean something and they say something about what we value in Uptown Charlotte. And so I'm prepared to support, uh, you know, uh, units like what's proposed in, uh, in, in the first option. Um, and the thing is, is that Bank of America is going to put 4.2 million of their money into the scattered housing. So in fact, we get both option one and option three in that process. So, um, I can tell you that if, I, I am very concerned about what the affordable housing community will say if we don't support affordable units uptown. So that, that concludes my remarks and, um, I'm glad that we're getting close to a vote on this project. So thank you.
Uh, Commissioner District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I want to go, um, for a moment and, and just comment on slide nine. Um, when, when you're going through the presentation, Mark, you, one of the things that you said was that it would be, uh, a boost to civic spirit, um, a civic spirit boost. And the question that I have is for who? Who, who is going to get the boost from this project? I think that's what, one of the questions that we really have to ask ourselves. And, and so when, when we talk about affordable housing in this project, um, these numbers, all of these numbers on page, uh, 18, no, no, not 18, ah, 16. No, not 16, sorry. All of these numbers on page 20. Um, and 21. Okay. 10% affordable housing is not a solve for affordable housing. It doesn't solve affordable, it's never going to solve affordable housing. Okay, when you're talking about 24 to 34,000 units that we are short, these, these new projects that come up where we have 10% affordable housing, it's not a solve. It's never meant to be a solve, okay? But it is symbolism. And, um, I really think that that's important. And I really, I really like what Commissioner Harden said, that sometimes justice is expensive. And yeah, it is. I don't want to live in a city that is only for the elite, okay? That's not the kind of city that I want to live in. And I don't think that's what most people want. I think we want a place where, when you're talking about a spirit, a civic boost, you know, that, that is for everyone. And so I, I think it's a false choice to say, do we do affordable housing or do we not do affordable housing? We've got to do affordable housing, uh, and, and even if it's only symbolic, we've got to do it. This isn't the way to solve our affordable housing problems. Um, I just think that's a false, uh, setup for, for us to look at it that way. Um, having said that, I do want to know what Enlivian's plan is. I have sat with Enlivian and, uh, at the time when I sat with them, uh, it wasn't a year, uh, a, a year away from their plans. They had a plan at the time. So, so I, I'm a little fuzzy on how now all of a sudden it's going to take a year for their plan. But having said that, I support the idea of doing option one, option three, so that we can get all that we want, as long as when Enlivian does have their plan, that we can be a part of it. I appreciate that Dina, um, brought that to the table, that option two could still be something that we invest in in the future, if we decide that's how we want to invest our dollars. Um, but I just think we should get away from this notion of, you know, well, it's only 36 units. Well, even if it was 200 us, units, it's a drop in the bucket from what we need. This is never going to solve affordable housing. It's not even going to make a dent in it. So I just think we should take that, uh, off the table and talk about what we want in our downtown. What do we want in our central business district? Do we want it only for the elite? Um, that's, I think, a question we really need to ask ourselves. Um, and I also think that the Spirit Square portion is something that I'm extremely concerned about. I, I really don't like this idea of demolishing Spirit Square. I never have. I don't think, uh, unless you put back, uh, space for artists, I want to see where the artist spaces are going to be. I don't, I don't like this idea at all. So, um, I really want to see more about that. I think that's extremely important, that, that we don't eliminate arts and science, uh, from, from that space. I, I just really hate that idea. I think that is, I, 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 I did want to look at page 16, if I still have a moment, to ask about the TIG. And can you tell us how many years, the $25 million for that investment? Um, not less than 25 million for below grade and above grade parking. Okay, so how many years of investment will it take to pay that back to the county? The 25 million?
I don't have the detail on that. That'll, that'll be worked out during the development agreement. But typically I think it's 10 to 12 years is what you normally see with those deals.
Okay. Thank you, that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you, uh, Mark for the presentation. Um, I will tell you that this proposal gives us a whole lot to think about between.
You forgot, you forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Powell, let's let you go first.
Well, I was going to say you forgot me. So, um, I have a quick question for the county attorney. Um, can you speak to this non-binding MOU?
Well, a memorandum of understanding really is an agreement between the parties. Uh, we've not worked through it yet, so we work through the details when we begin to talk about whatever the board, whatever the directions the board wants to go.
So everything that we talk about today is non-binding?
Well, what you recommend is what will be factored when we begin to negotiate the details and the nuances of the agreement itself.
Okay. So I think the non-binding word is, you know, uh, makes it feel like it's not official, but it, it is official because the more that, uh, that it moves along, the more strength it gains. So I just wanted to get clarification on that.
If, if I could interject, um, there are portions of it that are, that are binding, such as the exclusivity clause, uh, access to the site, termination clauses, sort of more boilerplate things. The non-binding portion, uh, are the, are the, the other, uh, all the, all the rest of it, uh, basically.
Thank you. So I just have some comments, um, and a, a lot of what Commissioner Fuller said, and Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell, like, we with. I don't have a good feeling about this. Um, my smoke detector is going off, like, very concerned that the vision and the public benefits and the decisions are being pushed and tweaked again by people with disproportionate sway. I really want to hear from the community. I want to hear from Enlivian. I want to hear from Equitable Communities. I want to hear from the Community Building Initiative Group. I want to hear from the public before we go forward. And when someone tells me there's a sense of urgency, it just makes me slow down. Like I need to really think through this as we go forward. This is public land. Our public dollar should be doing public good. And, uh, and, and I am just very concerned about what I'm hearing from community members right now. So my smoke detector is on and, uh, and I'm concerned. So I'd like to request, before we go forward with anything, before I vote on anything, because I cannot support if moving forward without hearing from Enlivian. And again, I'd like to hear from Equitable, Equitable Communities and the Community Building Initiative Group. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Things, first of all, Dina, will you tell us how long this project has been, uh, being developed?
Uh, it's probably almost five years.
Five years. So that doesn't seem like a rush to me. Uh, in five years, we've heard from a whole lot of people. Um, and so, uh, I, I don't want anybody to think that finally coming to a decision seems like a rush after five years of, of, of trying to get to this point. Um, I, I, um, well, I, I think we have the best of both worlds. Um, in that we can actually do all three. The question is, are we willing to sacrifice residents for the many in exchange for the few? We can build 36 units. Uh, we can build in excess of 200 units. They're all for the same people. We build the 36 units, we are basically sacrificing other people. As we've been told, 36 units is a drop in the bucket in terms of what the needs are. So the needs aren't going to get any smaller. We're going to need even more affordable housing. And so I don't want to have to look back four or five years later and say, well, we put 36 families downtown, but there are now 40,000 families that need affordable housing. I think we need to think seriously about that. But, but we can do that. Uh, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I want to ask the question about something that I, I can't find it right now. Uh, and Tyrone, there was something in this stipulation about us working with another developer, which suggested to me that we couldn't work with Enlivian outside of the development or we couldn't bring them back into development. Will you remind me where that is and, and explain, make sure I understand exactly what it says?
I have to pull up that document, Mr. Chair. I don't have it in front of me.
You, you don't have to give it to me, give it to me tonight.
Okay.
What, what, what I do want us to remember is that even if we did option one and option three, as the manager said, we could come back at a later time and still do option two. I mean, that's the best of both worlds, even though I still think we're sacrificing a whole bunch of people for 36 units. But, you know, I'd be willing to make that, I, I, I'd be willing to do that just to move forward. Because at this stage, we've been waiting five years and not delivered anything. And my big concern is cost escalation. And five years ago, had we done this, we probably would have saved millions of dollars. And to delay it even further means the cost escalates even further. Uh, we do have some affordable dollars that if, if people are dead set on working with Enlivian, we can do that. But I will tell you, even if you decide you want to wait to do Enlivian, I would not in good conscience be able to move forward without seeing a plan, not a promise, but a plan to tell us how they're going to build it based on our contribution to their effort. Because based on the information that I get right now, they're going to have a hard time getting funding other than the county's funding. Now, if that's not true, they need to tell us that. And so with that being, with that in mind, Madam Manager, I've heard this concern. I want to schedule a special meeting specifically for the purpose of having Enlivian come and address the entire board so that that issue is off the table at the time that we vote on this issue. So we can do, uh, um, a virtual meeting and have them prepared to address the board so that we can make a decision on, um, when are we supposed to vote on this?
We're going to vote on this on June 2nd, but we have two full days scheduled for next Tuesday and next Wednesday. So I think if we get with Enlivian tomorrow, we can have them come, uh, for a portion of one of those two days.
And, and that's fine. I just, I, I, I want that issue off the table so that people can hear directly from Enlivian. And if you will instruct them, they need to come with a plan and not a promise. And they need to know us, let us know, just like we've been asking all these questions about how the numbers work. We need to know how their numbers work as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we'll take care of that.
Okay. Are there any last minute questions about this particular presentation? All right. Hearing none, we, we will move to, um, consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion to adopt all those items that have not been pulled from consent?
So moved, Commissioner Fuller.
Second, Scarborough.
Moved by Commissioner Fuller, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Go call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Leake?
Yes.
Commissioner Drell?
Aye.
Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cockham?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, we'll move to consider item number 6116. This is a budget amendment for criminal justice services, pulled by Commissioner Leake.
Let me first say thank you to the board for, uh, and to the staff for responding to these items that I pulled, criminal justice services. And my rationale was number one, has CI, CJ has received, and how much have they received in grants last year? And I believe that's listed, so can someone say publicly what that amount is for the manager?
I do not have that number in front of me, Commissioner Leake, but if it's in your, in your pocket, you could, you could say it.
All right. I think it's 1,216,94 grant funding for that department. And my concern is the spending of those funds and how those funds would be spent to impact this department. And they always come asking for more money, no disrespect, so please don't think that. And the last statement was the revenue increase for this budget amendment is from Cardinal Innovation. So help me understand how Cardinal can, uh, ask us for more money for services.
So Commissioner Leake, they are giving us the money. They have gotten some, uh, dollars, um, through, um, some various sources that they are supposed to be distributing out to, uh, various communities. So they are not asking us for money, they are giving us money.
And how much is that?
$37,048.
Coming from Cardinal?
Yes.
For the, uh, CJ, all right.
For CJ, yes, correct, it's for.
So those ones can be used to impact the people in Mecklenburg County, am I right?
Yes.
Not just young people, but senior citizens also, right?
Well, it's really for, um, crisis intervention officers. So if there are seniors involved in crisis intervention activities, then yes, they would be able to participate.
I just want to make that clear. So moved, Mr. Chairman, and thank you.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Leake, seconded by Commissioner. Moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cottum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Moving on to item six-one-two-six, budget amendment, Sheriff's Office Special Revenue Fund. Moved by Commissioner Lee.
And thank you. It says revenue fund, special revenue fund, and revenue and expense increase. So down at the bottom of number two, it talks about monies that have come in and how those funds will be spent. And it says five percent of the commissions from the inmates telephone calls. My question here is, how much is each telephone call by an inmate? Does anyone know?
I do not have that information, Commissioner Lee, but I can find it for you.
Could you get that for me, Madam Chairman?
Absolutely.
All right, and thank you. The other thing is, I'm not, uh, questioning so much how they spend it, other than when they say for education. I'd like for them to specify, are we paying for laptops? Are we paying for books? Are we paying for staff? So if they could itemize those listings, it would be helpful to me and to the public for supplies. When you say supplies, that could mean a lot of things. But I'm going to go ahead on and move that we uh, approve this because it talks about vocational educational programs. But I'd like for the Sheriff's Department to indicate what those programs might be and what it will cost us to do it. So moved, Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
Okay, Commissioner. Commissioner Lee, uh, before I move forward, are you only referring to item six-one-two-six or both six-one-two-six and six-one-two-eight?
What is six-one-two-eight budget amendment? Yes, the two of those, but they were separate.
All right. Okay, so it's moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough, that we approve items six-one-two-six and six-two-eight. Go call vote, Commissioner Powell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cottum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was unanimous approval for both items.
Thank you.
Item six-one-two-nine, grant application um, for alternatives to commitment program.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. My concern was, what are those programs? And I do know that they're geared toward our young people, juveniles thirteen years of age at risk of being placed in a youth development center or community placement. How and where this will take place? My question is, are they working with the parents of these young people along with providing those resources for them? Will parents be included?
Yes, I suspect that, that it's a family intervention. So they're going to be working with juveniles, but I think the parents will absolutely be, uh, involved in that.
Well, please, please let me know, uh, Dina.
They're under the supervision of the court.
I'm sorry.
They're under the supervision of the court. So the families would be involved if they, they're under the supervision of the court.
All right, thank you. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Um, Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cottum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right. Item sixty-one-thirty.
Pardon me, I'm there.
Grant application, um, in those level-two dispositional alternative programs.
All right, this is, Mr. Chairman, this is similar to the thirteen-year-olds. So this embraces the fifteen-year-olds with the same type of support that, uh, we talked about for the thirteen-year-olds uh, under case managers and the juvenile court system. I still want to know too if parents would be involved in it. I'm assuming yes. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I'm sorry. I said yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cottum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. This next item, I think Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Lee, sixty-one-thirty-three, Health Department Amendment Fee Schedule. Commissioner Powell?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I pulled it because I was concerned, Commissioner Fuller and I were concerned about the TV assessment dollars, but that has been, um, taken out. So I, I have no concern anymore.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, I pulled it because one of the questions I had was, uh, the Health Department, uh, budget for last year. And how will these funds be used if they're asking for a fee increase? But we saw all of that. So I'm going to approve this with the rec, with the information pertaining to the asking for the Health Department for last year. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Scarborough.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cottum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Madam Clerk?
That was a unanimous yes vote.
All right, item sixty-one-fifty-eight, capital project ordinance. Moved by Commissioner Lee.
Thank you so much, uh, wanting the public to know when we talk about capital project ordinance and those projects as listed is David B. Waymer Recreation Center on Hux Road Park, now known as Clark Creek Park. It's going to be completed or is complete by Park and Rec. So this, which is providing a total of fifty thousand dollars to the David B. Waymer Recreation Center project to purchase furniture, fixtures, and equipment to complete that particular project. And I'm sure the people will be happy to know that. Uh, Hux Road Park, now known as Clark Creek Park. And it talks about, uh, David B. Waymer Recreation Center is located on one street in Huntersville and Hux Road is in another. So moved, Mr. Chairman, knowing that these going to be completed and furnished.
Second.
All right, moved by Commissioner Lee, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. Commissioner Powell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Aye.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cottum?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
Commissioner, oh, yeah. Chair votes aye. All right, that completes our, uh, consent agenda. We're moving now to commissioners' reports. Each commissioner will have three minutes to share information or either make comments. This is not the opportunity to make motions or to take actions. All right, we'll start with Commissioner Lee.
Let me first say thank you to this public for affording, uh, me an opportunity to serve as your representative and to speak for your concerns. I want to cite a business in District Two that talked with me the other day as related to what they were doing in the community. And I wanted to share this. Every Monday, this particular business is providing lunch for its staff of a hundred and fifty-two people. And I thought this was worth saying, and I'll get the name of it and share it at the next meeting. But I do want to say to each of us to talk to those who have these big businesses in our community and see how they're serving in the community and serving the district. The next thing, I want to thank all of the commissioners who have supported me and spoke to me about an incident that took place, and we will further talk about that. But I certainly do appreciate your concern and your interest as well as this community who saw the incident. Thank you very much. That ends my comment.
Okay, um, Commissioner Jarrell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I, um, just have a couple of brief comments. One, um, want to really say, uh, thank you to, to staff for um, their continued work and effort through this time. Um, it's really uncomfortable for one. And so just appreciate them, uh, the continuous effort to, to bring us information and to deliver information. Um, and I dare not to go unrecognized. To, to my colleagues, thank you all for your thoughtful approach to these, um, to these issues that, that we have to deal with. Um, it's really, really important that the public stands that we take this very, very seriously. We're not here for group think. We're not here to co-sign behind one another, but we're here to challenge each other and to us an in-depth conversation on all of these issues. And I appreciate your thoughtful approach as we try to navigate and make the best decisions for this relates to everything that is, uh, under our purview. And so again, I want to reiterate to our working families out there, you are not forgotten. We are still looking for solutions to make sure that you're supported because you do and are the ones that provide seventy percent of the lift that everyone else is, uh, benefits from. And I want to make sure that, that we continue to lift you all up and, and know that, uh, the solutions that we're working in are for you. And, uh, I just, again, appreciate the leadership of, of my colleagues. And remember, community, please mask up. I'm asking mask up MEC. I started a hashtag, mask up MEC. So please mask up. I'm not seeing enough people out there that's doing it. So let's continue to push that message. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Harden?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, colleagues, for your, 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 I agree with Commissioner Jarrell that we, uh, we push each other and we get closer to better decisions because of the interactions between staff and commissioners. And so that's part of it. And so thank you for, for raising that up, Commissioner Jarrell. I want to, I want to, um, say a couple of things. One is, is that I, I am very concerned about working families too, as, as Commissioner Jarrell highlighted, and especially I think it's important to remember that there are people who have not received any, um, any benefit yet in our community that have, there are people that have applied for unemployment. They've applied for different grants and they have not received that yet. And there are families, I think, that as we, as we end towards the month of May and start to go into the month of June, that there, there are families sitting around tables right now wondering how they're going to start to pay their bills at the beginning of June. And so I think it's really important that we remember, um, that as we, um, go into these budget conversations, recognizing that um, it's not, you know, the, the world dramatically changed from where we were three months ago and that we have to be as responsive as possible to the challenges that are literally facing many families in our community. Um, you know, I'm reminded of the, uh, statistic that the chairman, the federal, the chairman of the Federal Reserve provided that forty percent of the families who earn less than forty thousand dollars a year are now unemployed because of COVID. And so this is, I mean, this is impacting everybody incredibly. But we know that there's a disproportionate impact for women in this community as it relates to the impact of COVID. And, and really that there are people who, who, who often work two jobs that were carving together, you know, livings, working, you know, carving a number of jobs together to make forty thousand dollars a year who now are currently unemployed. And so making sure that they get access to the relief benefits is certainly got to be at the top of our list and providing for working families, I think, is absolutely critical. And the second thing I, I want to, I just also want to double down on Commissioner Jarrell's, uh, comments about wearing masks. Again, I'm, 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 I'm working with and talking with seniors every day and, um, you know, Gibby talked about, there's two hundred long-term care and nursing home facilities in our community, and many of them are in my district. And I can tell you that, um, it's important that we are united in the importance of wearing masks. And so thank you, Mecklenburg County, for wearing the mask. Thank you for, you know, going through that inconvenience. And I, and it is hot to wear it. I was walk, doing my walk in the neighborhood, wearing my mask, and it's, it's hot. So thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner Susan Rodriguez McDowell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just wanted to, uh, just come back to the task force, uh, that Commissioner Fuller proposed. And I think I wanted to highlight about it, and the reason why I really wanted to support it is because it's, uh, in my mind, what I want to focus on is recovering. And, um, and I think, you know, the, the, the governor will have a plan for reopening. Uh, the Business Roundtable has its ideas on how businesses can reopen. But, uh, this crisis is really going deep, uh, deep, deep, deep into so many aspects of our community. And so I think, you know, we're talking about mental health and housing and, and all kinds of things that we really need to make sure that we're being outward focused, that we're getting input from people. Um, and that this is going to be a really long-term recovery, like a year, like more than a year. Like it's going to be, uh, there's going to be permanent, uh, things that, that, you know, deep wounds, uh, that I think, um, it would be right to have a task force that is focused on how do we recover and how can we impact most people? So, um, I just wanted to say that as, as far as the task force goes. And, um, and I think it's really important that, that we as commissioners are setting an example with wearing masks and with promoting masks. And so I really appreciate Commissioner Jarrell's uh, hashtag, and I am going to start promoting that too. So thanks for that. And, uh, thanks, everyone, for watching tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Powell?
I'm here. Um, I want to thank Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell for bringing up parity to towns and, and maybe also you, Commissioner Dunlap, for bringing that up. I think it's extremely important for us to be mindful of all the towns while we are working with that twenty-one million dollars. So, um, thank you for that. And, um, I want to just say again, I'm going to say this to every single government entity that I can talk to, uh, how I think that we need to keep thinking of, in this crisis, how can we be the most responsive all the time? Not just Monday through Friday from nine to five, but how can we be more responsive? Because, um, people need us right now. And, and so be thinking about how we can do that, and I'll be sharing some ideas. And thank you, Commissioner Jarrell, for your new hashtag, mask up MEC. I never leave home without it, and I rarely leave because, um, I'm trying to follow all the recommendations. Uh, so mask up MEC, it's extremely important. Think about the people that you love the most. It's a small thing to do to protect the people we love. And that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just a few, just a few, uh, things I'd like to share. Um, I like the hashtag, um, mask up MEC. That was something that I had jotted down that I wanted to remind people of. Um, and not just the mask.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but you missed a couple of us.
Yes. Uh, Cottum?
Oh, my Lord.
All, all the at-large.
I must, my computer must have moved. Okay, so let's do it with Commissioner Cottum first.
Um, thank you. Fuller and I are kind of laughing at this, I guess. Um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I do want to, um, really give a lot of credit to Dina and Mark Khan for not just their presentation, but for not just her presentation, but many years, the enormous amount of time that has been spent on this over the years. And also to Gibby for her continual work on the COVID nineteen. I do want, as I was listening tonight, I thought to myself, and I've said many times at a board meeting over the years, that topics, issues are more complicated than we know. And a lot of these issues we've talked about are really very, very complicated. And those of us who are on the board, I mean, we, we did get deep into them, and it takes a lot of time to do that. And I appreciate the longevity of some of my colleagues that have been out there. I think of Commissioner Lee, who's been out there for a long time and, and that have seen a lot of things. And I like to listen to them. I do want, as we talked, just to kind of summarize, as we talked about affordable housing, I kind of cringed at some of the comments about the advocates for affordable housing. There are a lot of wonderful advocates for affordable housing. And, and I have been on many boards with them over the years, the Housing Advisory Board, and, and they do some great work. But we must always remember, it's not about the advocates, it is about the people. And the idea that the advocates want the symbolism, you know, it's the people want a place to live. They want to get out of their cars. They want, they want to have a place that's safe. And it's always about the people. And so I just, I just had to say that I've just, and I just, it's, I think it's important that all of us remember, if you're advocating, it's not just about the advocates, it's about the people that we're advocating for. What, what do they need? What do they need? And I, and just lastly, I am confused, as we end this meeting, that we listened to our manager say that Enlivian does not have a plan, and they can have a plan in a year, and then we asked them to come and give a plan next month. I don't understand that. So I might need someone to come, the manager, to help me understand that after the meeting, but I'm kind of struggling with that. If they don't have a plan, and I do like the idea that there's another option that we could help them and collaborate with them in a year or so when they do have a plan. But I, I just don't understand why they're coming. But anyway, that's, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Fuller?
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all my colleagues for the great discussion tonight. You know, we deal with tough issues, as has been mentioned. We are in the people business, and that's just naturally a tough, tough business. And so I just want to thank all my colleagues for the really close attention that has been paid to these difficult issues that we're dealing with. And so much thanks to our county manager and our staff for all the work they do to tee these issues up for us to make decisions. And so I'm very proud to serve as a county commissioner for this county. We are still leaders, not only in our state, but in our country. So I just really appreciate every time that we meet, that we deal so carefully and what's great concern for the people in our issues. I do appreciate this meeting, that we've had more folks on video. And for those of you who didn't, you know, put your clothes on and all that, do that next time, because I think people want to see you. And I know it's, you know, do, do like they say at church, just come as you are. Because I think the public wants to see us again. And, and we, we need to do so as we lead our community. And so I'll end with the notion that we have big jobs, all of us, all nine of us have big jobs to do and more than a million people who depend on us. They don't depend on us just to be a rubber stamp. They depend on us to really give our all to issues that affect the people of our community. I'm just proud that we are all doing that, and I pray that we continue to. Those are my comments. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, is there anyone else that I omitted? All right, so finally, I get to make a few comments. Again, I was saying about the mask up mech. I love that tagline. Because there is a concern in this community. But also, we can't forget the fact that a lot of these people who are vulnerable are not wearing masks. So I don't know how you compel people and you tell people that this is serious when they're in that population and they're vulnerable, and they still choose not to wear masks. So not just ma, wearing the mask, again, reminding of, of washing your hands and how important social distancing is. The latest report is that there's less of it than it was some time ago, but still more than when we first got started. We just to remind people, we're not through this yet. So we still need to mask up, wash our hands and do social distancing. I want to remind our community about our emergency medical services and to commend them and to recognize them for the work that they provide to our community, this being their special month. Also want to remind you that we don't have to wait till budget meetings to get budget-related questions responded to. Send your questions to Adrian, Michael, to the county manager, who you think might be appropriate to get your response. It will decrease the amount of time we have to deal with this, and you will get the information that you need in order to make a compelling argument to your colleagues at the time that we go through our straw voting. Let me respond to why it is that Enlivian is coming. I heard that response about them not being ready. There are some of my colleagues who don't believe that and are not comfortable with that. So when they come, you will know whether they're ready or not, and you will know if it will take them a year. Or you will know that they have a plan and they will have a plan to present to you. So this is to, to get everybody who supports Enlivian an opportunity to hear from them themselves prior to our vote about whether or not they will be prepared and what their plans are. I agree, this has been a good meeting. I don't expect us all to always agree, but I expect us to have good conversation. And I think we, we've had that tonight, and I think we've listened to each other's concerns. Because if there's one thing I have no doubt about, that is the fact that everybody who sits around the dais is concerned about the citizens of Mecklenburg County. We might come down on different, different places, but I think the concern is genuine from everybody here. So again, I want to thank you for a good meeting. And if there's nothing for the good of the order, this ends our agenda. And so I will entertain a motion to...
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Fuller.
Second, Lee. Scarborough, second.
Move.
Get up out of here.
Commissioner Fuller, and seconded by a host of commissioners. All those in favor, Commissioner Powell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Yay, yay.
Commissioner Jarrell?
Yay.
Commissioner Harden?
Yes, and I'm a point of personal privilege. Thank you for your leadership, Chairman.
Oh, God.
All right, Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cuthem? Commissioner Cuthem? Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Scarborough?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
And Cuthem votes aye.
Who said that?
Cuthem.
Yeah, we passed that now. Me and Sam.